Oops. Where am I? Yeah, here.
Okay.
The thing that I gave us. I mean, if you leave, I don't want to sit here tonight and start detailing all these kinds of things. Those are variance, the conditions you'd put on a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel pretty adamant about it, given the discussion we had.
Veronica did her homework.
So that's what you'll hear from me.
Okay, that's good, but thank you for that.
She always comes.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 23 Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting. We'll start the meeting with me reading the meeting procedure, and then we'll move on to our agenda for this evening. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping to make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 p.m. on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her names and addresses for the record, and explain his or her request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item to facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting. There is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker, per agenda item, unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record, and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an item, an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 p.m. and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 p.m. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 p.m. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. And no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or agenda item. Okay, so the first order of business is will be our planning commission, and we've got approval of the minutes from the September 25 meeting. Anybody on the board have any additions to the minutes or ready to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make a motion that we accept the September 25 meeting minutes.
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mike to approve the minutes and a second by Veronica. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye.
The minutes have been approved. We have no old business, so moving on to new business. We have a Shoreland Management Ordinance Amendment application by Heartland Lakes Community School. Proposed amendment to Section 401, Table 1 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to add an education use as a conditional use. Do we have applicants here for this, Eric? So, yep, so if you want to come up to the table here in front, give us your name and address, and then tell us a little bit about your application.
Okay, I would love to. Good evening. My name is Joanna Wallenberg. My address is 31795 County Highway 50 in Park Rapids. And I am here on behalf of Heartland Lakes Community School, which is a free, public charter school of choice that will open to kids in grades K through sixth grade in the fall of 2024. Heartland Lakes Community School is a grassroots project that grew out of some local community members, educators, business owners, parents, mental health professionals, daycare coaches, who saw some need in our community and wanted to expand the choice for families and students in the educational realm. So in, through this project, we're hoping to bring several categories of resources to our community. Obviously, educational resources, it's a school, it's a public school. We're also bringing some financial resources that wouldn't come into the community without a project like this. So the, when I talk about financial resources, what I'm talking about are things like lease aid, where we would enter into a lease with a property owner to rent a school facility, hence the ordinance amendment request. And also some additional startup funding that we actually just got word we received, a $1.35 million startup grant from the U.S. Department of Education. So that's exciting resources coming into this community through the project. So, like you described, the ordinance amendment is pretty straightforward. We're simply asking that education use be added to that Section 4, Table 1, for things that are allowable on the shoreline in Hubbard County. We know, and a big part of our, we know because we live here, and a big part of this school project is environmental stewardship. The programming and the plan involves outdoor classrooms. It involves what sometimes is called like place-based learning, where kids learn in the place where they're at. There's lots of good research out there talking about how valuable that is for kids in all kinds of areas, mental health, in academic learning, and then in lifelong stewardship that they learn. There's research out there, you won't be surprised, you know, I have research. Someone nerdy enough to want to start a school does look at the research. So there's a lot of research out there talking about how the best predictors of adult stewardship is two things. One is time in nature during childhood, and the second is watching role models, adult role models care for nature around them. So that's really well-aligned with kind of the Hubbard County plan for caring for our resources. We know as residents here, it's a big piece of why we live here and what we like about it. So this school program and the model kind of follows right in line with that. Like I said, getting kids into nature is a big piece of our plan. We plan to use both indoor and outdoor classrooms and spend lots of time learning about the world around us. Now, we know there's not specific language banning educational use in the shoreline in Hubbard County, and we know there's lots of great education happening on the lakes and rivers here. One example, of course, is Northern Pines Camp. While that qualifies as both youth camp and church, my own kids have attended Vacation Bible School there every summer, and I, in the way backs, actually went to sleepaway camp there, learning both to canoe and play tetherball right there on the Fish Hook Lake shore. So we know these things are happening, amazing educations happening in Hubbard County already. Camp Wilderness, Camp Courage by Tuskas State Park, obviously, and the Brush Lake School Forest, where I get to chaperone my kids' field trips. So we just want to make sure that as we, this project moves forward and we get toward entering into a lease agreement with a property owner like the church and the camp, which is what we're hoping to do, we do it by the book with integrity, both for our project and for the landowner that we enter into a lease agreement with, so this can be easy and streamlined for them. I think that's, that's all.
Okay.
But do you have questions?
Okay, yep, we'll have some questions. Before we do some questions here, my board here, Eric, I'm just going to ask you about any guidance you've received from council on this that you could share with all of us regarding this application.
Sure, so the council said that when considering this proposed amendment, you could either look at possibly using the existing semi-public use category or developing potentially a new category for educational use or whatever term you, label you would use. The semi-public use as currently defined in the ordinance is pretty specific and narrow as to what it's meant to be used for, so council didn't feel that it would work the best for what's being proposed without some amendment to that definition to broaden its scope so that the umbrella, so to speak, for that definition would better encompass an educational use of property. So I checked with the DNR as to whether they've had any semi-public use CUP examples that would involve education elsewhere in the state, and they didn't have any that they could share. We haven't had any applications, to my knowledge, ever made under that semi-public use category. And so as a result of communication with council, it seems that considering a separate new educational use category of some kind would be the more appropriate way to go because you could then develop performance standards that would be specific to that as opposed to using it under a much more broad semi-public use category that doesn't quite fit.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have comments or questions?
This is Ken. The applicant did an excellent job job for the need for a school, but those sound like conditional use permit or variance arguments. Our objective here is merely to decide whether we would like a school use to be allowed in the shoreline zone, and that's what I think we need to focus on. And with that in mind, trying to look at alternatives, I think an education use, as you describe it, is a lot like a church. You know, churches have schools, things like that, the kinds of activities, groups, lots of activity centered around it. So my thoughts, I'm going to lay this out for the group, is that you could combine, you could take the church use and add and call it church and education use, and then I think the two conditions that are in our current ordinance would be applicable. It wouldn't allow an education use in a natural environment lake, but it would allow it, under conditional use permit, to be in a recreational development or general development. And I think just for reference, the two conditions that apply to church, and I use that because I can remember back several years ago when we struggled quite a bit as to should we allow a church use. There was lots of concern about the amount of activity, that if a church were close to the lake, there's a lot of the good shoreline management practices that might not be able to be adhered to. So the two conditions that were placed on churches, if I can find the page here now, are as follows. And I'll read it, and you could add in, add school to that. The church is, I say, a school building and any accessory structure or facility must be located within tiers three and four. Means 500 feet from the lake, I think is that the number. From the ordinary high water mark of a lake flowage or lakeward extent of a flood plain designated by ordinance. Second thing is the parcel or lot on which the church or a school and any accessory structure or facility is located must be a non-reparian lot that does not have access to a lake pond or flowage by a controlled access lot easement or any other means. So basically, it's saying you could have a school, it has to be in third and fourth tier, and it can't be a reparian lot. And those were the conditions after a lot of discussions back when we added the church use that I think would apply. And I know your reaction's going to be, oh, let's see, that building, which I don't know, won't work. But that's okay because if we approve this use, it says you can have a school. That would open the door for you to come back with a variance and say, hey, this facility is used very much like a school. You know what it's going to be, we want to use this building, et cetera, et cetera. And there's a probability, you know, it's up to the board, there's always a probability, likely maybe in this case, that it could be approved to variance. But I'm, I'm not in favor of a use that enables your application and then loses sight of in the future where schools could be built or not built. So that's my logic, that's my argument, I should say, arguing, that's my logic.
Okay.
Going back to a lot of discussions we have with church, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but that's how I would see it play out.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else have comments or want to respond to Ken's thoughts here?
This is Veronica speaking. I, I agree with Ken on multiple levels as far as that it could possibly be added to the church use. I like the idea of it being very similar to the church use, having the limitations on the recreational development lake and the general development lake and not on the natural environment lake. I agree with that. Mike, I did have a question for Joanna because when he mentioned tier three and tier four, I do know that that does possibly affect you because looking at your application here, I can't see how far that particular building is from the lake. Do you have a rough idea how many feet it is from the ordinary high watermark?
I don't know that.
So he, I think Eric might be able to pull up our maps and give us a rough estimate on how far it is from that particular area there.
Is at least.
But again, though, like Ken mentioned, that even if it doesn't fit the criteria that he's guiding towards or looking towards, a variance could be, you know, possibly an application for that because.
I tried to do this the other day, and I could figure out how, 400 feet. So you're within, within 100, be within about 150 feet of the third tier, so that would be pretty.
Pretty close, yeah.
Yep.
Anybody else? Do we need public comment? Okay, while we're thinking on that, we're going to open for public comment on this application. Anybody with public comment? And seeing none, I'll close public comment.
This is Veronica speaking. I have another question for Joanna. Joanna, you mentioned that you have startup grant funds received. Do you have a timeframe or a deadline to spend those, that funding?
Yeah, great question. They are for the first five years of operation.
Okay.
So there's, there's five different grant periods within, and the total five-year grant is the 1.35.
Perfect, thank you.
And you, when did you say you were, you thought you were going to start it up?
Fall 2024.
Okay, so that gives plenty of time for ordinance change and stuff, so, okay. You want me to make a motion?
Anybody else before Ken is ready?
Yeah, no, I, one more, this is Veronica speaking again.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Before we go too much further, I would just like to get some information from staff as well as if the two church and schools combination, if you see that fittingness.
I would say I'd keep them separate. I mean, you could certainly copy some of the performance standards applicable to churches, but I would make it a separate use category.
Okay.
Just in case one or the other we want to change in the future, you don't want.
It's just cleaner.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good now.
Okay, anybody else? Ken, you're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the county commissioners that we add a, an educational use to the use for public waters or public waters classification. It would be only for recreational development and general development lakes, not for any or special or rivers. And that two conditions be placed on this use, which are identical to those currently listed for a church.
Which are?
Which?
Which ones, Ken?
Oh, well, okay, I can be more explicit, then let me.
Ken, would you like me to read them? I have them in front of me.
No, I got them here.
Okay.
The, they would be, would be item 10 from Section 402 with the word church replaced by educational buildings. And all the other wording under A and B, under 10, would be identical with church replaced by educational use. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you, and then I'm, I'm guessing, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you're intending this to be a conditional use?
Oh, yes, C, yes. That's what was proposed, yes, a C. Recreational development, general development would be Cs, conditional use, and there would be a star on the educational use listing. And there would be now Section 14. Currently, we have 13, 13 specialty use, 14. There would be a 14, Section 14 for performance standards for educational use. Okay?
Good, thank you.
You're okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody for a second?
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken with accompanying language for the conditions and status of this application and a second by Veronica, so we're going to take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye.
Okay, we've got a recommendation here for the board. Approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the Board of Adjustment, and so we first will have the approval of minutes from the September 25 meeting of that, of those minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes as presented, or ready to make a motion?
This is Mike. I make the motion we approve the September 25, 2023, meeting minutes.
And this is Mark. I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mike to approve and a second by myself. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye.
They've been approved, so now we'll move on to our first application in new business here, which is a variance application 34-V-23 by Dennis Spees, part of government lot 1, Section 12, Township 140, Range 34, Henrietta Township on Boulder Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 13.12.01000. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section 702 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed expansion of a non-conforming residential dwelling located in the shore impact zone. Got the applicants up here, if you want to give us your name and address.
Yep, my, my name's Dennis Spees. I'm at 21228 County Road 18. I'm the property owner, and Andrew is my contractor.
Give us your name and.
My name is Andrew Burton, a general contractor on the project.
Okay, address?
28210, State 34, Akeley, Minnesota.
Okay, and so you want us, either of you give us a description of what you're wanting to do here for this application?
Yeah, so there's the existing structure that they're looking at updating. It is currently a small cabin and a detached garage, and we have proposed to demolish those items and consolidate the footprint and with a new build. More or less, that's the.
Okay. So anybody on board here have any questions or concerns about this application?
This is Ken, just a question. I, I think the topography is such that all of the stormwater runoff from the building and platform would run into that pond. Can I, can, you remember, it seemed like it was all slanted that way. So as long as there were gutters that didn't force the stormwater in the other direction, it would continue then to go into the, into that pond, and that's my only concern.
And that's how the current construction works as well. The current footprint of the construction does that as well. And our, our new construction is virtually the same square footage. We're just adding a second story, and that's what we were trying to do is keep, keep it in the same footprint. So we'll, we'll build it the same way, and, and it is higher towards the lake than it is back to the, because everything does drain to the pond on the property.
I think there was less than 300 square feet in terms of total footprint.
Okay, anybody else?
This is Mike. Could you tell me what the height of the building will be?
Yeah, we had, I believe that was 25.
27.5 and a quarter.
Twenty, okay, yeah.
27.5 and 3/8.
And 3/8, okay, I'd say it was very close, 27.5 and 3/8.
Does that include the three feet of fill or is that from?
That, no, that's an arbitrary, just based on top of concrete to.
So, so what you're doing is raising a three-foot, we'll call it fill or a pad to set the concrete on?
We actually only had to raise approximately 10 inches. I figured in, I think a foot to safely. I figured in, I think a foot to safely surpass that recommendation or requirement for three feet.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Veronica speaking, I just want to clarify that there is a valid practical difficulty in meeting the hundred-foot setback on the lot, and the size of the proposed house and attached garage footprint is very similar and reasonable to the request that they have, and we've got clarification on the height, structure, and the extra fill brought in, so I'm, that's, just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
Thank you, Veronica. Anybody else with any questions? I think I'm going to open for public comment on this application. And seeing none, I'll close public comment. Personally, I don't have any problems with this project, so I'm not going to make a lot of comments on it, or anybody ready to make a motion or have additional comments?
This is Veronica, I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready.
Okay, Veronica, go ahead.
This is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application per site plan as presented. I also would like to have the condition placed that gutters be placed on the structure, and that all the stormwater be directed towards that pond behind, and I will adopt the staff's findings of facts.
This is Mike, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve this application by Veronica with a couple of conditions, gutters and stormwater being run to that pond behind the home, and a second by Mike, so we'll take a vote here. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, your application's been approved, you'll get a letter in the mail from ESO, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Okay, the next variance application is thirty-five dash V dash twenty-three by Dwayne Hensel, part of the northeast one quarter of the southeast one quarter, section thirty-three, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township, parcel zero two point three three point zero zero three zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from section four subdivision A one, point A, point two of the subdivision ordinance for a proposed boundary line adjustment that will make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming in regard to lot width. Got the applicant there, so if you could give me your name and address for the record?
Dwayne Hensel, one two five eight one, County Road thirty-two, Park Rapids.
Okay, and just give us a brief description here of what you want to do in this application.
We found out that my line, his buildings were crossing our property lines, so we just moved a line to the west, ran along the easement that the tower company has in there, is all we did.
Okay. All right, anybody with questions or comments on this application? None, okay, I'm going to open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is anybody ready to make a motion or have further comments?
This is Ken, I just want to make the comment that, you know, there's supposed to be the three hundred foot, feet wide. The, this change has not, does not change the frontage on the main road. It's still, you know, it was non-compliant at two hundred thirty-six feet, I think originally, and that doesn't change, so it's pretty straightforward to me and very appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay. Well, I'll, I'm going to make a motion myself to approve this application and adopt the staff's findings of facts. I have a second.
This is Ken, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we have a motion by myself and a second by Ken, we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, your application's been approved, you'll get a letter in the mail from Eric's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next variance application is thirty-six dash V dash twenty-three by Steve and Kim Baumgartner, lots eleven and twelve, Swastika Park, section twenty-one, township one forty, range thirty-four, Henrietta Township on Long Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one three point four five point zero zero six zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section seven oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed expansion of a non-conforming dwelling in the shore impact zone. Got the applicants here, if you could give us your name and address for the record, and then tell us what you want to do.
Steve Baumgartner, we live at one eight three three nine Deer Drive, Park Rapids.
And I'm Kim Baumgartner, one eight three three nine Deer Drive, Park Rapids.
Okay, and just a brief description of what you're asking for?
Yeah, the existing structure is twelve hundred and seventy-five square feet, and the closest point to, to the lake is about thirty-three feet, so that's the non-conforming aspect of the existing structure. It's, it's three bedrooms as it exists right now, and two of the bedrooms don't have any closets, and we're looking to reconfigure some of the interior walls to convert the existing structure into two bedrooms, and consume the other bedroom to add some closet space. We, we live here year-round, we intend on spending a significant, significant amount of all four seasons, and so we have hunting and fishing gear and warm weather clothes. So the expansion would go to the south, and to alleviate the, the ordinance as much as possible, we plan to set the expansion back so that it, it, the expansion itself is outside of the shoreline, shore impact zone, fifty feet from the water. The addition is five hundred and twenty square feet. The bedroom that's consumed from the reorganization of the interior walls in the existing house would be replaced in the addition, so it, what was a three-bedroom would be maintained to be a three-bedroom.
Okay. Edit?
Yep.
Okay, anybody with questions or comments on this application?
This is Veronica speaking, I just have a supportive statement that I would like to have for the record. The addition itself, as he mentioned, is located outside of the shore impact zone. The proposed location for it is the only spot available on the lot because of the way the garage and the driveway is located, and with those other improvements, so there really isn't another viable option. And this addition, like you mentioned, also will not increase the number of bedrooms in the cabin.
Thank you, Veronica. Anybody else?
This is Ken. Your current cabin is fairly close to the lake. I would like us maybe to consider the gutters on both sides of your expansion that directs the water away from the lake. I think the topography allows it to go, I looked at the lake shore, you do have a buffer along pretty much, but it does slant to the lake, so I think gutters on both sides that would ensure that the downspouts direct the, the water away from the lake would be appropriate in this case.
Can I ask a question? Parallel to the lake shore, because like, as you mentioned, it does slope towards the lake pretty much continuously.
If you look at the drawing here, the, the ease on this side, you'd have a gutter along it, downspout, and the, and at the bottom of the downspout, it would be directed back towards us in this picture.
But that's uphill, there's a, there's an increase in elevation coming towards us in this picture, is there another picture?
You think it is?
Yeah.
I, I thought that that, where that was, was higher elevation than what's back farther here.
So this perspective we're looking at right now, you see the two doors on, which happens to be the east side of the house, there's a sidewalk there, that's basically a level elevation where the sidewalk is, and then you see a grassy area next to those two kind of light green bushes, that starts to elevate up about, there's actually three steps that go up to the concrete driveway, so there's an increase in elevation, it would have to be pumped uphill.
Where is the water that runs off of your current structure on that end of the, the cabin, where does that water go?
It's hard to show without a pointer.
Comes down in the cement, there's a.
It comes down out to the south, so it goes parallel to the lake. Who's got, Eric, do you have the pointer?
There, that, that's the south end there, where the arrow is.
So there's a, a downspout right there, and that gutter, that downspout directs the water out to the south, which is.
To the south, and so the new, and so that would be the same direction that the downspout on your addition would do too, right?
Yeah, but it's not away from the lake, it's parallel to the shoreline.
It's not, well.
It's, it's not, it's not away from the lake shore, it's parallel to the lake shore.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
To go away from the lake.
No, I'm, fine.
Okay.
It's not, it's not towards the lake.
Right.
Okay, you understand what I'm trying to get at here, I, you don't want the stormwater running into the lake.
Yeah, I think, the house has existing downspouts, and I think you want us to maintain those downspouts all in the existing direction. Well, I think what you may have noticed is some of the downspouts on the lake side of the house go towards the lake.
Yeah.
On the existing structure that we weren't planning on.
But you have a buffer along most of the lake there, have you brushed?
Yes.
That's what I know that, okay.
So anything on the addition, you want to maintain the downspouts going basically parallel to the lake?
Okay.
Are you good with that, Ken?
Yeah, I'm not so sure what, I guess I would say, I'd add a condition that the downspouts are such that the stormwater is directed away from the lake, I won't say what direction.
Not towards the lake.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Yeah, my, my own feeling, this is Mark, about gutters was I, I should have looked closer, but it didn't seem to me that with the existing grade that you would necessarily achieve anything by having them there, so it wasn't an issue for me. I don't know if you still feel that way, Ken, but that's.
I would think you'd want gutters all to the side and down.
Okay, I'm not opposed to them, I just wasn't sure that I saw totally the benefit of them. Anybody else?
This is Mike, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a motion that we approve this application with the condition that the, it's, the addition has rain gutters and the downspouts are directed any direction that is not towards the lake. And accept the staff findings of fact with a correction on number three where it's check both yes and no, we should have just a yes check there.
Okay. Okay. And this is Mark, I'll second Mike's motion, and he's given us conditions. We'll take a vote on this, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye, your application is approved, you'll get a letter in the mail from Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next application we have, variance application thirty-seven dash V dash twenty-three by George Nyberg, excuse me, part of government lot one and part of government lot two, section twenty-four, township one forty-five, range thirty-two, Farden Township, parcel zero seven point two four point zero zero three zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from article four, section one point oh three of the subsurface sewage treatment system ordinance to create a tract that, that doesn't have the required minimum of two type one drain field sites, and we have the applicant.
My name is Tracy Chessmore, my address is four eight two seventy-seven three twenty-third Avenue, Castle Lake, Minnesota. Like you said, our subdivision application did not meet the requirements of a, a type one system with an alternative site. We had two different septic designers come out to survey the property, and they could only find a maximum of nine inch soil separation, so they had to design a type three with alternate site, and that is what is, what we've made us through the variance application, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by our board or comments on this application?
This is Tim speaking, what year did you buy this property?
Well, it's currently in my dad's name, this is George Nyberg, and so he has quit claiming the deed to us as.
And he owned it a long time?
Um, yeah, he has owned it, it's been in the family, I can't give you exactly how many years, I want to say it was gifted to him, two years, two, three years, I think, but it's been in our family name since the fifties, I guess, I'm not sure.
Eric, I, I have a question for you, if, if they were just going for a septic permit, would they have to get a variance because of that type three from you, or do you do that administratively? If it was just not the subdivision, just the septic itself?
If it wasn't being subdivided, it wouldn't trigger that requirement and the state septic rules and our septic ordinance that requires.
Would allow the type three.
To type one sites.
Okay. Anybody else, comments? Board? I'm going to open for public comment. This application, seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Myself, I.
I was just going to ask for your insight.
Tim speaking, myself, I, I see no harm in that three inch difference.
Okay.
I guess, I don't know, I'd ask Eric if, if you would make somebody, an installer, add that three and then do a three-foot separation above that? If this was, if there was a motion to approve? You know what I'm saying? It's nine inches now, would you make that twelve inches and then put their mound on that?
Yeah, I guess I haven't given that thought, but it potentially, I mean, it's not that much more, and it's a type three, so it's kind of.
I'm just thinking of an inspector down the road doing a compliance inspection.
That'd be the safe play to go.
Anybody else with comments or questions?
This is Veronica speaking, I, I have the same feelings, it's due to the soil type that the type three drain field would be acceptable in this situation too, the only thing triggering this need is because of the subdivision, otherwise it would not have triggered the need.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Timothy, I'll make a motion to approve the application. Answering first finding is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls, I'll say yes. Treatment of septic on-site is in harmony with the intent of the official controls. Number two is the property. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? Yes. An on-site septic system is reasonable to have. And I'll adopt the staff's findings, three through five.
Could I add to two? And that splitting this property into two ten-acre lots is reasonable for a rural area?
Yes. Also, I'd like to add that the installer, add the three inches to make the twelve-inch soil and then put his three-foot separation above that under his rock bed.
It's a condition?
That's your condition, Tim. Okay. Okay. And this is Mark, I'll second Tim, Timothy's motion here. So, we've got a motion by Timothy to approve and a second by myself with the condition noted by Timothy on that system. So, we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your motion's approved. Get a letter from Eric's office in the mail. Thank you. Okay, the next variance we have here is application, variance application thirty-eight dash V dash twenty-three by the Schwint Family Trust, government lot seven and the southeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter of section ten, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-three, Crow Wing Lake Township on Third Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero six point one zero point zero one nine zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to replace and enlarge a structure that is part of a non-conforming use. We've got the applicant here, could you give me your name and address for the record?
Yep, Mark Frank. My address is two three four two two, state eighty-seven, that's Nevis, Minnesota.
Okay, and tell us briefly what you're looking to do.
Yeah, so, kind of like I shared with you guys when you guys came up for the site visit. Resort was established back in nineteen sixty-five by Erickson. It was sold in the seventies to Kaufman, and then my uncle, great uncle Lou Schwint and his wife Joan at the time purchased it in nineteen eighty-eight. Unfortunately, he lost his wife in two thousand twenty-one, where I've been helping out because he's getting up there in age over the last few years. And during that time, we're looking at trying to do some upgrades to look at sustainability for the resort for the years to come, for the next generation. And our cabin six was one that was not being used. There were some trees that were on the backside of the cabin that since pushed the wall in and foundation, so our first order of business was to dig into that literally and remove the trees and take a look at what we had to work with. When removing the trees, we quickly found out that the, the back wall was pushed in to a point where it's in disrepair, needs to be demolished. In doing so, we reached out to the county to kind of see if that's something we can just replace, which we could, however, with the Minnesota Department of Health, they say that if you have a two-bedroom cabin, for example, or a bedroom in a cabin, it's a hundred and twenty square feet is what you need for a bedroom. So, for us to have a two-bedroom cabin, we need a hundred and twenty for each of those bedrooms, plus increase of the bathroom size. And when you had a chance to go out and look at the site visit, you could see those bedrooms are definitely far less than that. The bathroom, you can bend your head in the wall while wiping your butt at the same time, so they're pretty tight. And so, in doing so, we need to then apply for variance to accommodate that. In doing so, we also want to increase the height of the, from seven-foot sidewalls to eight-foot sidewalls, get our three feet of separation from the water table. So, when looking at the differences of the twenty, currently the twenty by twenty-two to a twenty-eight by twenty-four is to accommodate for the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines there for the bedroom size. Increase the bathrooms without taking away from the what livable, livable spaces also in the cabin. When looking at, there is that wall on the backside, like we talked at the site visit, we would look at securing that wall, or that hill, I should say, better with a retaining wall system as well. And if you have any other questions?
This is Mark, I'm just, you just commented on the, the back there. To me, it looked like that, that cabin, the rear wall was a combination rear wall, retaining wall. And it, you're not going to do that again?
Absolutely not, no.
So, were you intending, I guess I wasn't clear, on trying to retain that whole hill back there, or what were, do you have any thoughts on how you would do that?
Yeah, so, I didn't get a chance to walk you over one cabin over to cabin five, but that's one that he did a few years back when it was more a slab-on grade. And then he had a guy come out, actually jack up the cabin, and they put floor joists underneath it and put a little crawl space under that. In doing so, he was able then to, by increasing the back by three feet, was able to fill in that backside. So, by us increasing that base by three feet, we already gained three feet just with the foundation, which is going to be a solid foundation. And then from there, you can step back and go up, so.
Okay. Anybody else with questions or comments on this project? No, while we think about it, we'll open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. It's me again, Mark. You're going to put a foundation under here? Crawl space, did you say?
Yep.
Okay. And so, you're raising that grade, what I call grade, up from its existing, how far?
So, the floor would be up three feet from...
Three feet from where it is right now?
Yep, to get us that separation.
And then Eric, would you go back to, you showed the drawings there, okay, right there.
So, I tried to draw within that, you can kind of see that there'd be increase where the floor joists would be, so just enough to crawl underneath there.
Okay. So, we got seventeen foot six overall height, is it?
Correct.
We're seeing there?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Veronica speaking. Mr. Chair, during, staff just suggested maybe a vegetative buffer, lakeward. Did you by chance look at it, the, the lakeward stuff, or are you open to some type of vegetative?
I'm open to that, I did not. I was focusing more on the rear area. Also, I don't know, this is Mark, again, your plan, the order, if this were to be approved? But to me, it would just, depending on how soon you got at that, that dirt back there, regardless of the structure itself, I would, I, I personally would like to see a silt fence back there at the base of that, just because you got a lot of erosion running there. So, unless you're going to start right away on that retaining wall, to me, it would just make sense to try to keep that runoff...
Addition to the silt fence I already have around it?
Yeah, but on the backside. Did I see one behind the building?
Currently, the silt, you don't see it in this picture, but we had that silt fence you guys stopped at, that went around the whole cabin, so one right in front of the cabin.
The back?
Yep.
Behind the back?
Yep.
So, as long as we keep that intact?
Yep, that was the first thing we put in after we dug it out.
Okay.
Yep.
My, my bad.
No, no worries, just was clarifying. Thank you.
All right. Anybody? Ready to make a motion or feelings on this?
Seems reasonable. Six hundred and twelve square feet versus four hundred and forty or something. It's not overly large. Meets departmental health requirements, makes sense.
This is Veronica speaking, Ms. Frank. Right now, currently, what does the, what are your lake, your shoreline conditions? Is there sand beach? What do you have right there in front of, is there grass growing?
So, yep, so currently in front of the cabin, there's grass, and you can see there's the road that goes around in front, and then in right in front of there is where the boat launch landing is. But there is grass on the other side of that road as well. While the water sits actually on the backside of the road, because there's just enough of a dip in there, so it works out perfect as a natural spot for the water to percolate through the grass.
Okay.
Yeah, that picture might be able to see.
Pretty flat and very sandy.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not a lot of...
Not a lot of options there.
Right.
This doesn't substantially change from what's there.
Anybody else, or anybody ready to make a motion on this?
This is Veronica, I can make a motion?
Okay, go ahead.
Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application per site plan as presented and adopt the staff's findings of facts.
Okay.
This is Mike, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica to approve this application and a second by Mike. And Veronica's adopted the staff's findings of facts. We'll take a vote on it. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved, you'll get a letter in the mail.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, the next, next application we have is that variance application thirty-nine dash V dash twenty-three by Mark and Jeanie Konzimius, lot fourteen and lot fifteen, block one, Mantrap Lakers, section six, township one forty-one, range thirty-three, Mantrap Township on Big Mantrap Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels two zero point three seven point zero one four zero zero and two zero point three seven point zero one five zero zero and two zero point three seven point zero one six zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section seven oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming residence located in the shore impact zone that will expand the addition authorized by variance fifty dash V dash twenty-one. And we've got the applicants here, so if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Mark Konzimius. Address is four hundred East Twenty-seventh Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five seven one zero five.
And I'm Sarah Swanson, counsel for Mark Konzimius.
Okay. Okay, and tell us briefly what you're looking to do?
This is an addendum to the variance that was approved two years ago, September of two thousand twenty-one. After that approval, we secured professional services of architectural designer. And in that process, we, the best solution we determined for the cabin remodel to conform with the desired roof design for the water to run away from the lake was this, we consider at least a modest addition to the backside of the cabin. And that allows for two, we currently have two bedrooms in there, but one of them's not even large enough for a queen bed, so this would allow us to have two modest-sized bedrooms, as you can see there, and a bathroom. So, the highlighted yellow part is the addition. And then there's, I think they call it a stoop, but it's a covered entry.
Covered, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, anybody with questions or comments on this project? While we're thinking about that, I can tell you that I really don't have any issues with your project here at all, so I don't have any questions for you, it seemed pretty straightforward. I'm going to open for public comment while we're thinking about it. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody else with any comments or questions or ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica, I'll just throw out some supporting statements. I'm in agreeance with you, the application is pretty straightforward, modest in size for the addition. The proposed exterior entrance addition will be placed on the non-lakeside part of the cabin, and the aesthetic impact will be minimal. So, I'm in favor of the application as well.
Thank you, Veronica. Okay. Well, if nobody else is, I'm ready to make a motion. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve this project and adopt the staff's findings of facts. I don't have any conditions that I would add to it. We have a second?
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion by myself to approve this project and a second by Veronica. Don't have any conditions to add to it. So, we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Application's approved.
Thank you.
A letter from Eric in the mail. Thank you so much. Okay, the next is variance application four zero dash B dash twenty-three by James and Paula Dreason, part of lot seven, block one, Island View, section three, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-three, Crow Wing Lake Township, between Island Lake, a recreational development lake, and Third Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero six point five one point zero zero six one one. Applicants are requesting a variance from, are requesting a variance from article five, section one point zero one of the subsewage sewage, subsurface sewage treatment system ordinance and section eight oh one point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance regarding the twenty-foot habitable structure to drainfield setback. Got the applicant here, give us your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Jim Dreason, one three three four five Leighton Street in Ham Lake.
Okay, and just give us a brief description or what you want to do.
Yeah, we're requesting to screen in a portion of our existing deck. Screening in the deck will allow us to use this outdoor space in the evening without mosquitoes, in the fall without the hornets, and whenever the wind is from the south without dust from Choke Cherry Drive. We're, we're not proposing to change the functional use. It's still going to be essentially a, a deck that is screened in from some of the elements. We'll be using it as a gathering space with friends and family. We have some lot limitations that preclude relocating our drainfield. We looked at, could we, could we relocate the drainfield to provide the twenty-foot setback? We've got a bluff, we've got the neighbor's cabin, which is proximate, and then both our well and their well are within, you know, preclude the hundred-foot setback from, from an existing well to a drainfield.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board on this application?
This is Veronica speaking. How far is the existing well from the corner of the cabin?
Seventy-five feet.
Okay.
I gave her a question. She asked how far the well was from the corner of the cabin, seventy-five feet.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else with questions or comments on this application?
The, the current home, which is the footprint that's there, is one bedroom down, and what's on the second floor?
Currently?
Yeah.
Aloft.
Do you use it for sleeping space?
It's essentially game space for the grandkids.
Okay. And you, you are adding an addition, I guess by permit, to the back? It shows two bedrooms, what's on the second floor above it?
Another bedroom.
So, you will have four, four official bedrooms in?
Correct.
When that's done?
Correct. Yep.
This is Mark speaking. Just a question for Eric. Would this, this setback that we're, we're dealing with here normally, most normally, applied to basement situations as of, in this case, we've got a structure on post-footings, but that is not as typical, Eric? Is that correct? How do you, how do you view that?
Well, the setbacks and the septic rules are there for two reasons. One is to make sure you don't get sewage entering a basement or a habitable space that would be below grade. The other would be when you ever have to do any construction to maintain the system or replace it, that you aren't going to risk the structural integrity of the structure when you're excavating. structure when you're excavating for doing work to the system, so those are the two primary considerations, so effluent is not a concern with the elevated screen-in porch that's proposed, it's more the issue of whether you'd risk any structural undermining issues if you ever had to do work to the septic system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Tim, for septic. If and when the systems would fail, staff has indicated that septic might be able to be placed on the other side. I believe that's stated on, in some of the findings, that the relocation of the drain field could be placed on other, so that the setback can be met. My question for you, Tim, is that there appears to be room if the septic were to ever fail on the east side of the house. Since that land is undisturbed over between the house and the seventy-five foot well.
Yes.
Do you foresee that there's possible area for alternate drain field in the future? I know you haven't done a design or anything like that, I'm just...
Yes, I think it could fit over there.
Okay. I'm kind of going towards your way, you're questioning, Mr. Chair, as you'd mentioned with the septic, I had same, same questions in mind, this proposal that the applicant is having, it, the size doesn't change, the location doesn't change, it's still elevated. The proposal itself is going to be on the post, so it's, this eight-foot setback for me is not, I'm not too concerned with that setback because it's not, you know, gonna have, be directly affected with the septic. I am concerned, like, staff has indicated that if you do have to tear up your system, you might have some integrity issues with your, your posts and such with that. But you do possibly have alternate site on the other side if your system was ever to fail. I can't confirm that, but there's a possibility there since that area is undisturbed. Whether you put the screen-in porch on that side or you put the septic on that side. At this time, I, I don't see an issue putting the sixteen by twenty addition on top of the deck.
This is Tim, I agree. Going through the findings.
Well, if we open for public comments, I can continue.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
Another comment. My understanding when you're out there is that your current septic system, the tanks, there's a two-bedroom cabin that belongs to a relative that feeds in. That and the drain field are sized for five bedrooms. If you go ahead with your addition, you'll have four plus two is six, you will, you will be this word, not in compliance with the septic system? I mean, that, I, I don't, that sort of fits into this and doesn't, because the addition is, is by permit.
The, the permit also includes adding a, a new septic on my sister's property, so that we will be in compliance.
Will it be, will it divorce completely from, from the tanks, or will it just be additional drain field?
Additional drain field. The, the tanks are determined to be sized appropriately.
So a drain field would be?
Correct.
Does that, how does that fit in? He can build that addition by permit. Are we, is it appropriate for us with this, if we approve this variance, that, that new, that additional drain field has to be installed before he can occupy that? How, how do we, how do we handle that?
Eric speaking, what I have on the screen is the sketch from a septic application that was submitted and designed for the system to service the adjacent property to the southwest that currently shares that septic, so this shows how an entirely new system is gonna be installed to service that other cabin. And then my understanding is...
Does include tanks, I'm sorry, I misstated that.
Mr. Dreason will then have his structure serviced entirely by that existing system that has been shared, but it will be disconnected from the adjoining cabin, and that adjoining cabin will be serviced by this new design that's on the screen.
Oh, I thought he said it was still gonna be...
I misstated that, we have tanks.
Oh, okay.
There are tanks there as well.
Fine. So it's not, it's not an issue with this variance thing?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to open for public comment on this application. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Veronica, had you...
I had some more questions if, and comments for the applicant, please. Okay, so according to your application, the, as you mentioned, the addition will be built over your current deck utilizing the posts and remain open air underneath. It's gonna remain open air?
Correct.
Okay. What is the elevation of that current deck on the high side and the low side?
The high side is about, is forty-four inches on the highest, sorry, the low side is forty-four inches, on the high side it is about seventy-five inches. Maybe eighty, I can stand under it, but...
You had no intentions, though, to enclose that bottom area, it's gonna remain open air?
That's correct.
This is Veronica, again, I just, I'm in favor of the application allowing the sixteen by twenty addition on top of the current deck would provide space on the east side of the residence for an alternative drain field site if and when the current system fails. That would be in harmony with the ordinance's intent. But if anybody has any more comments or questions, otherwise I can make a motion.
Go ahead Veronica.
You're good, okay. So this is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application as presented on the site plan. With the intent that the entire open, would stay remain open air, okay? I will provide answers for the findings of facts one through three. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls, yes. Allowing the proposed sixteen by twenty addition on top of the current deck would provide space on the east side of the residence for an alternate drain field site if and when the current system fails. This is in harmony with the ordinance's intent. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official control. Yes, again, placing that sixteen by twenty screen porch addition to the cabin on the existing decks is a reasonable use. The use will be changing, but the chances of sewer entering the addition will be nonexistent as the elevation won't change, with the addition being on top of the current deck, which is forty-four inches from one side and up to seventy-five inches on the other. And number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners. Yes, due to the size and shape of the property, allowing the sixteen by twenty screen porch addition over the current deck preserves the area. Plus also, they are constricted with that bluff that's on the south side of the cabin. And I will adopt that, number four and number five.
Okay, this is Mark, I'll second Veronica's motion. And Veronica has given us findings of facts for answers for one through three and adopted the staff's answers for four and five. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your motion is, your application is approved, you'll get a letter in the mail from Eric's office. Thank you so much. Okay, the next we have on the docket here is, excuse me, variance application forty-one dash V dash twenty-three by Anthony and Kathleen Bona. Lot eighteen, Beltane Westview Beach, section eighteen, township one forty. Range thirty-three, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcel two one point five two point zero one eight zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section five oh six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to place a guest cottage that exceeds the seven hundred square foot maximum footprint on a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot with requirements. Got the applicants here, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Kathleen Bona, and my address is seven oh three Second Avenue Northwest, New Brighton, Minnesota. And we have owned our property here in Nevis for forty-four years.
Okay, and you are...
Good evening, Steve Bona, for, my address is forty-four forty-five Snail Lake Boulevard in Shoreview, Minnesota.
Okay, all right, and then if you could just give us a brief overview of what you want to do here?
Okay, good evening. I'm just gonna give you some background on our existing cabin, it kind of helps to put the, to put it all together, what we're requesting tonight. Our, our cabin is a log cabin. We, we built it back in the early nineties. We've owned the property since about nineteen eighty, seventy-nine, eighty. The, the log cabin was built essentially on our own, my dad is a craftsman, and so we sort of built it in the summers. And it's small, it's modest, eight hundred thirty-seven square feet on the main level, it's kind of like a cottage size. And it has two bedrooms, a lo, a partial loft, one bathroom. And we definitely love this cabin, we want to keep it the way that it is, that's the plan. It's been a lot of work, the logs are a lot of work. They, just all sorts of maintenance on them, and and so we have a sandpoint well, we have a wood stove, so it's just seasonal, we close it down in the winter. The cabin itself does not lend itself well to any sort of addition. It's, the logs are very small, they're older, and it wasn't built way back then with that intent to expand, and so that's what we're running into right now, and we'd like to also leave it the way it is, I don't know like how you would do an addition onto the cabin, because, you know, if you try, we wouldn't do logs again, that's for sure. So siding, or I don't know how you'd make it look proper, but structurally, that's, that's our biggest concern, I don't know how that could be done. So if we were able, if we, if we had like our, our cabin, the cabin that's next door to us is stick frame, and it would be really easy to add onto a cabin like that, and in our case, we have these logs, so in addition to this, that's the cabin, and then in addition, we're planning on building a barn-style garage in the back, out back. And sort of like two separate topics, but they come together here. That is, this area is not visible from the lake, we can just build that garage by permit, and but then as we were thinking this through, instead of doing open roof trusses in the barn, we could build the same exact barn with the guest cottage above it, and in the upper level. And so we could do that without changing the building style or the dimensions at all, basically, it would be the same. So the barn would look the same, the barn garage would look the same whether it had the guest cottage on the upper level of it or not, maybe some windows, you know, that might be the difference. So we, so we're asking for some increased square footage size, and just kind of thinking of, of what you have to consider, just the unique circumstances would be this older log home that I'm working with right now. And then the character of the overall, the overall character of the area would remain unchanged, we have right next door, a couple of large barns. This is in the back, so it is out, it would not be visible from the lake at all. And as far as the character and the visibility from the lake, it would just remain unchanged. We have some neighbor support for what we're proposing, and I was hearing tonight just about the water draining away from, the water all drains away from the lake, we're, we're proposing this project to. That's the quick run-through.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments by my board here on this project?
This is Mike. This lot is a hundred foot wide, and by ordinance you need a hundred and fifty feet for a seven hundred foot, seven hundred square foot guest cottage. I think this request is excessive, and as presented, it's difficult for me to see how we could answer any of the findings of fact in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you, Mike. This is Mark, I'm just gonna ask you, well, first of all, I'm gonna direct to Eric, if, if they were to scale their proposed living area in this proposed building down, that's allowable? No, so, because I remember we've had cases somewhat similar in the past, so...
For an existing...
Right, so I guess what I'm asking Eric is, this structure that they're proposing building has like available up there seventeen hundred and some square feet, they're asking for sixteen whatever odd square feet. If they were to ask for less, seven hundred of that, is that allowable?
No, as, as Mike indicated just a minute ago, the lot doesn't meet the hundred and fifty foot minimum width requirement. It's a hundred, so that's, that would still require a variance to build against that.
Require a variance, just because of that fifty, okay, okay.
This is Tim speaking. If they, if they wanted to add on to the main structure, though, they could by permit.
Correct.
Hey, this is Mark, I'll ask you, how, what did you do in order to explore the idea, or did you not as far as cost or the, to add on to your existing cabin? Did you formally have quotes on that, or did it really never got to that point? You've told us that it's really not practical to do, and I'm just wondering how far you went with that as far as an addition on to your existing place?
We do have a builder that I'm, that I'm talking with, but I never, I didn't get a quote or anything. We know the structure of the cabin the best. We've had, we've had logs that have, that have become sort of hollow in them, we've had, you can, you can knock on some of them, and we're trying to figure out how to deal with those, you can tell that they're gonna need to be replaced. Right on the front is where we have some of those. And, and these logs, we basically had someone come in and build it, all they did was a, it was, you know, I don't, I don't know if he was a real licensed builder or anything, but he built, he just put up the logs, and you know, they, we love it, but they are what they are, and to try to add on to the back, because we'd add on, we'd go out the back of it, I just can't imagine how we would be able to do it. You really have to see it for yourself, I think, to, to understand that. And we do like, we like the size of it as is, we'd, we'd prefer not to make it look bigger, we like the look of it. But yeah, we just, we're looking for more space, so we that's why the request.
Okay, anybody else with questions or comments?
Your drawing shows a building, what, fifty by thirty-five? And then there's a note about a seventeen by thirty-five lean-to. So that it doesn't kind of show it on there, that must off of the lakeside?
Correct.
Doesn't show it there, but your intent is to have a seventeen-foot lean-to on that side also?
Correct, it would be just a lean-to and a patio, so if that would be the front, like with the front door there, then like a concrete patio with a covered entry, entryway.
And your access to the storage building is, where's the drawing?
If you're, if you're looking towards, if coming in from the north would be the garage doors on, on the building.
From the right side, facing the driveway?
Yes. So there'd be some garage doors there.
And how do you, would you access the second floor? From outside or... And how do you, would you access the second floor from outside, or, or?
The idea would be inside, so if you would go in where that con, where the concrete slab is, we envision like a mudroom, like an open space, and then steps, just going up. Probably two-half sections of steps. And this lot is a hundred, eight-hundred ninety-one feet. It's just, it's very deep. All of the lots on, in this area, all of them going south of us are all kind of very deep lots, but they're that one-hundred-foot width circumstance. So that, the proposed building couldn't be seen from the roadway either.
This is Veronica speaking. I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned that there's a basement in the current cabin?
Correct.
And you said there's some sleeping quarters in there occasionally?
Yep.
Bedrooms, whichever. So, do you have intentions of making this? You currently said it's three-season only. You don't use it in the wintertime, but it has the capabilities of being a four, four-season?
The current building? Well, that's not easy, because we would need a new well, and our plumbing is not, our plumbing would need to be upgraded, and then, you know, some sort of heat, more permanent heating system.
So what are, your current proposal for, you've got a proposed well in that area already for your new proposal?
A new one, yes.
Okay, so but you could have a new well put where you could do an addition on the current cabin?
Yes, that's true, yes.
I didn't hear her answer. How many bedrooms do you have in the current cabin?
There's two, and then there's a partial loft, which there's a couple beds up there. And the downstairs is, we painted the block walls, we painted the block walls, we've laid down some carpets. It's just sort of like semi-finished.
So in addition to the two bedrooms, there's living space in the basement where people sleep?
We have a couple beds down there for guests.
May, may I speak?
Sure, go right ahead.
In regard to your comments about adding on to the cabin, the only place we could really add on was to go, would be to go straight back.
Okay.
And you would have to be cutting out, and that's where the two bedrooms are, cutting out log walls to access that. And that is not easy. It would be very expensive to do that. And then to, and then you'd have to go into, do you call it a stick building?
Stick frame.
Stick frame, yeah. It would ruin the character. I just can't imagine cutting through those logs to access another, an addition.
Okay. My, my experience is in construction, but not log construction. So normally, I would say that, I'm not talking about costs. I understand, I, I haven't figured anything like that. I think that anything, almost anything is doable. I think you could do it. Whether you have a will to do it is a different story. Eric, could you pull that picture up again?
I'm talking too about the aesthetic of the cabin.
Yep, I, no, I understand that, that, the one maybe that shows the backside, do we have that? No?
Partial.
Partial. Go to that front side again. Could you tell me, what is, there's a window up in that attic area, what, what is up there?
That part's open. Right where that window is, is open, all the way down to the main.
No, it's, it's just, the ceiling is that.
Oh, okay. So there's no loft area up there?
There is in the back of the cabin.
Okay, okay. And do you remember, do you know, the rafters on this building, were they hand-frame rafters, or were they trussed? Do you know?
Um, I don't know.
Okay. Well, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to spend your money, I, but, I mean, I think, I think an addition could be done, whether you choose to do it or not. That's your choice, obviously. It's just, from my experience, I think anything like this is possible, and you could cut those logs. And, and header, I believe, I don't know if you, like I said, if you haven't had anybody out there to formally look at that option because you weren't in favor of doing that, I understand that. I just, I think it's possible, but I can't talk to you about the cost.
So this is Tim speaking. On that, the barn part, he could build that without doing any living inside of that? So, all the money that you would put into a well and all the plumbing and heating and everything in that barn could be used to remodel your log home and still have your barn?
Well, we, we could do that. We just, I don't know, these logs, I don't believe are, were, it's not, the logs are just not big, solid logs that you would build a log cabin with these days. And that's where we get very nervous about, about trying to disrupt them right now. But yeah, what you're saying is, is right. We would either do it out back, or we would bring that forward.
I've been involved in lots of them with several different log home companies that take logs out and change them. I've seen them cut into walls, put in the right supports where they need them. It's, it's definitely a, a log home builder's job to look at.
Right.
Yeah.
But then you're going through the bedrooms, the only two bedrooms we have on the main floor. You'd have to go through the bedrooms to get to an addition. It doesn't make sense. If we had some kind of place to expand, you know, toward the lake, of course, the living space could be in the middle. And we could imagine that, but we can't imagine going through the bedroom walls to an addition. It just doesn't make sense.
We, one of the things I was, I kind of figured that maybe, like, the shoreline ordinance is to protect the lake, and there's, it's more restrictive. So, the thought was that if we weren't going to build more square footage onto the cabin and leave it, you know, the impact of the lake would be, remain unchanged. And we just basically take that opportunity and push it back into the back where there'd be no impact to the lake, and we're building that garage anyway back there. But it is possible, I, it is possible that maybe we could do this to the logs. Anything's possible. It would.
Well, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you need to do something with your logs fairly soon when they're empty and hollow and.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we agree with that, too.
Okay, while we think on that a little bit, I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anybody else with any further comments on this or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, sure. This is Veronica speaking. I'm in the same position as some of my colleagues, is that, you know, we have five findings of facts, questions that we have to answer affirmatively. And because your cabin, as you've already mentioned, has some, you know, you're concerned with some of its integrity, and that you're gonna have to make some changes to the logs and stuff. And, and as some of us have already pointed out to you, that the money and the well and all of the improvements that you're wanting to put into a sixteen-hundred-square-foot guest cottage above your barn could be something that you could be done to your current existing cabin by permit. So it's hard for us to answer any of these first three questions affirmatively, because it can be done by permit. Your addition does not have to go straight back where the bedrooms are. Your addition can go to the side, off to the back, you know, the whole back. There's lots of different options that you have. I think it'd be very wise to seek some guidance, contact some contractors, and see what options you have to get that other sixteen-hundred-square-feet of living quarters that you're desiring. But at this time, I cannot answer affirmatively to the first three questions either, so I'm open for denying the application.
Anybody else?
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just, the lot is large. It's just missing the one-hundred-foot, or the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot width. So, is there, could there be a size, a square footage size that would be allowed for the cottage that could be over seven-hundred? If we, if we still build the garage and then we shrunk up the cottage or something, you know? I'm just looking for options, because I just don't think we're going to add on to the, to the cabin.
Anybody's feelings on that question?
Well, it's always open to another variance application that drastically changes from, from what's being requested here. But again, I'd point out that what we're dealing with is a hundred-foot lot with what, lot versus a hundred-and-fifty that's required by ordinance. And even if it was a hundred-and-fifty feet, we would accept seven-hundred square feet as a guest cottage, and, and this is considerably larger than that. So, based on those things, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike. I make the motion that we deny this application and accept the staff findings of fact.
This is Timothy. I'll second that motion.
Can I ask a question?
Why don't you ask it before I take a vote?
Okay, I, to your point, I'm just asking because it's true we have a hundred-foot lot, but it's nine-hundred feet deep. So the building that we're, we would hope to build is lengthwise on the lot, away from the lake, behind the cabin quite a ways. So, we do have the space. We have a lot of space for it. Like Steve was saying, you, you couldn't see it from the road, you couldn't see it from the lake, but you're only taking into consideration the hundred feet.
But that's understood, that you have a large lot, but it still does not meet the ordinance to build the guest cottage. And the guest cottage square footage allowed is seven-hundred. Based on the combination of those two things is why I made my motion. It does not preclude you from building your barn. You can do that without any living quarters in it by permit.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We're gonna take a vote now. Okay, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye on the motion.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. Your, your application's been denied. You'll get a letter in the mail from Eric's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have up, variance application forty-two-v dash twenty-three by Crooked Pines LLC, part of Government Lot Nine, Section Seventeen, Township One Forty-One, Range Thirty-Three, Manship, Mantrap Township on West Crooked Lake and Natural Environment Lake, parcel two-zero-point-one-seven-point-zero-zero-one-one-zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section Seven-O-One of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to expand and alter a non-conforming use and modify the use of an accessory structure allowed to be constructed per variance thirty-seven-v dash eighteen. And we've got our applicant up here, so if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Tom Seawick, Twenty-eight-Ten Garand Street, Northeast Minneapolis.
And give us just a brief overview, what you want to do?
As you stated, I have a garage that we built in twenty-eighteen by variance, past the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot shoreline, shoreline zone. And we're requesting to use this building as a resort rental cabin or living quarters. And it's, knowing that we're over density or over unit capacity on our non-conforming use, we're also asking that we would reduce for RV sites, sort of exchange. All four of those RV sites are in the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot zone. Actually, they're probably within seventy-five feet or something. So, close to the shore, and we would eliminate those in exchange for using this building as living quarters.
Okay, thank you. Anybody with any questions or comments on this application? I'm, I'm just gonna ask you, in, in our staff report, Eric has indicated that he's possibly supportive of the application, but he's asked for some condition, which I am in favor of. And I'm just wondering, are you aware of the conditions that he has recommended?
Something somewhere that I seen online or something. How did I get that? How'd I see it?
Online.
It's online. Okay, I couldn't find it. I was looking for a letter. Yeah, I was aware of that, so we had discussed previously that he supported that we remove these four sites and we would remove the concrete slabs that are there, and return that to, I don't know what the word is, vegetative, vegetative state. We, of course, are going to eliminate, you know, we have faucets there and septic, and there's some electric meters there. And those will be removed at some point, yes.
Okay.
You know, we want to use that area. You know, people have a picnic there, or, you know, whatever, what you use land for.
Okay, so you're aware of his conditions?
Yeah, I'm aware. I didn't, I'm not aware of the entire scope of that, though.
Okay. Anybody else with comments or questions?
This is Veronica speaking. I'm in favor of the application at this time as well. The proposal would make the resorts dwelling unit density slightly more conforming, even though it's still a little non-conforming, but it's gonna, reducing in sizes, headed in the right direction. I definitely think that if, with the conditions that are imposed, as far as the removal of the sites, one, two, three, and four, and all of the, that goes with it, it also has to have a date, a deadline. You're okay with the deadline?
Anybody else with comments, questions for the applicant?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement, but I think it's a good trade.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anybody ready to make a motion on this, or further comments?
This is Mike. I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mike.
Do we have one question before that happens?
Yes.
If you don't mind. There was notes in, you know, wherever that was. Should we say what those are, so we understand them and I agree to them?
Yep, we're going to.
Oh, it's gonna be part of the act of camps. Well, there we go.
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we accept this application, approve this application, and put the conditions that sites one, two, three, and four be completely removed, including the concrete slabs, electric, water, and sewer hookups, and any, any accessory sheds and/or platform decks. And the site be fully re-vegetated with perennial vegetation, preferably native trees and shrubs, by October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And I accept the staff's findings of fact.
What date in October did you say?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
And Mike, you know, that sentence finishes out. Do you feel that's important to add there?
Right, and the sites, and, and I'll continue. And before the garage storage structure can be used as a dwelling unit, and that failure to comply with the conditions by the specified date will result in the variance being null and void.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, this is Mark. I'll second Mike's motion. Mike made a motion to approve this application, and a second by myself. He gave.
Quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
Your motion includes that he can use the current garage immediately.
No.
He can't use it until the, those things are removed.
Conditions are met, yep.
And this is Veronica speaking. Only seven-hundred-ninety-three-point-five square feet of that garage for living quarters.
We need to add that, okay. We'll add that, Eric, to that. Okay, so we have a motion by Mike to approve this, and a second by myself with conditions that Mike read into the record, and accept the staff findings of fact, so we'll take a vote on this.
Do I have one more tiny comment?
Okay.
Two of the people, or two of the sites in the first row, they received a permit to put a storage unit on it this past year. Those people will be moving to another site on the property. Is it reasonable to say that that set could be just put to that site? You know, or to say, I just gotta go, I don't want to pay for another permit, you know? To say, I just gotta, I don't wanna pay for another permit, you know?
If you're still within the year validity of that permit, then you could just amend that.
Oh, and, and we are right. It was like in May, broiler May or something, I think we did them.
Then you should be fine, so then you just submit amendment information to show the new site that it's.
I, I think it was this year. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's good, Eric. Okay, so we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye, so your application's been approved and you'll get a letter from Eric's office in the mail.
Thank you, go Vikings.
Okay, well, next we have variance application forty-three dash V dash twenty-three by Travis Guida, the northeast one quarter of the northeast one quarter, section twenty-eight, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township, parcel zero two point two eight point zero zero one one zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Five, Section one point zero three of the Subsurface Sewage Treatment System Ordinance to create a new tract that doesn't have the required minimum of two type one drain field sites. And we've got the applicant here, give us your name and address.
Trav, Travis Guida, two four two five zero, Shady Ridge Drive, La Porte, and good evening.
Okay, and tell us briefly what you're asking to do.
Yeah, basically, just considering subdividing the parcel, it's required that you have two possible septic sites on the, both, both new parcels. One of them has one type one septic system available, but the other would be, the variance would be requesting to have a, a type three.
Okay. Go ahead, Veronica.
This is Veronica speaking, during the lot views, you mentioned that you didn't have the flow information for your current septic system. Just for clarification, did you just mean you didn't have it on hand or you didn't take the measurements as you were?
We do not have, we did not have a meter on it, but I was always under the understanding that I could reach out to the company that takes care of our, you know, pumping of the tanks to determine what the flow is.
Were you required to have flow measurements?
That would be an Eric question, I don't believe it was required, is it required?
Uh-huh. It is required, okay.
This is Timothy, that's what I was gonna ask, was there, was there going to be a window where he needed to put in a septic system for that? Those tanks?
Let me pull it up here. Just a second, that's not it. My apologies, it might be an internal document. I'm not finding it right offhand, but the agreement was that the septic system on the proposed east tract was found to be non-compliant at the time Mr. Guida acquired the property. With that property's transfer, the bank had a compliance inspection done, the drain field was found to be failing, and so the agreement was that the outlet from the last tank in the system would be capped and it would be used as holding tanks, and flow data would be gathered to ascertain what the flow usage was, so then a new drain field could be installed. That was back in twenty-one, and we haven't had any of that information supplied or any application or design for a new drain field submitted.
Can I ask a question, was that provided to Thielen's or was it sent to us or how? I, I'm not, I'm not recalling any, any requirement of it, I guess, but.
That I couldn't say, I didn't deal with the specifics, other staff did at the time, but.
So, this is Tim speaking again, where did this number, nine hundred and sixty-three gallons per day come up for that type one system, was that an estimate of what's there for, for that?
That number was provided by the designer that did the site evals, so I'm guessing he worked backward with the available space that he felt he had for the mound, and then based on that size, he determined what the maximum gallons per day would be that that system could handle.
And that's a system that's the, the one, that one is the one that's for the one living on the tanks right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, here's the information on the abandonment report. Where it states the tanks will be used as holding tanks so that they can ascertain what the average daily flow is.
Okay, but there's no requirement of a meter or anything like that being installed, it was just a matter of keeping track of the.
That'd be the only way you could figure that out.
Sure.
This is Mike, future use for this tract, is it going to remain the same?
Probably not, I mean, if it's within our ownership, it's not. It would just depend on if, if we ended up subdividing it and new owners wanted to do something else or try to roll it back the same way.
So if I understand correctly, for track two, where it has the failed system, we don't know for sure what the future use might be, and we have a design that's been done, but it does not take into account current use, so we have no guarantees that if the current use is continued, that we have a system that's adequate, is that correct?
It is, and I, I think it's, and I'm not an expert in this field at all either, but there's so many variations, especially as it relates to the use, even the food that's being provided in a restaurant can drastically affect the type of, you know, the number of gallons per day that can be affected. So that's why, without getting into the weeds of all of this, when the designer made the recommendations that he did, he just kept it general.
On the part that makes it the type three in the one spot, I can only find one sentence in this whole thing that relates to why it needed to be a type three. And it's in the narrative, and it said the previous construction and disruption of the ground, all factor to limit the septic development. So it's disturbed area, is that why it's type three?
We'd have to ask the designer that did the site eval.
There's nothing in any of these pages except for that. So it's not like a nine inch of undisturbed that we're dealing with, this could be something that's permanently damaged.
Anybody else with questions, comments? We're thinking I'm gonna open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
He did have the type one on the one site, so that type three could be the removal of it if it failed and back in the site, but that's.
When did, when did you go to the holding tank setup?
Ri, right away.
Which is how long?
Uh, it's been three seasons.
Three?
Yep.
And what's the total capacity of those two holding tanks?
It's three, I think, I think it's forty-five hundred gallons.
Forty-five hundred?
Yep.
There was six tanks inspected.
Was there six? Yeah, it was, I believe it was at least forty-five hundred gallons.
Well, which I, what I was trying to get at is, have you run an entire season without having those tanks pumped?
The first season, we had to pump it after about three days, the reason is because there was a leak and it just filled up, after that, it's never been close, but we've pumped it, you know, every other week, just to always be on the safe side.
You do what?
We've pumped it every other week, just to be on the safe side, but it's never gotten close to being full.
That could imply that far more than nine hundred and sixty-three gallons per day is being used, right?
Not even close, no.
Not even close, you're right. What's the capacity, six tanks, six thousand?
Yeah, I, I think it was at least forty-five hundred, I'm sorry, I don't have the information with me, but.
Tanks are five hundred or a thousand, Tim, right?
Are they all different sizes, is there, I, I think they're in there, but a lot of fifteen hundreds.
Oh, okay.
This is Veronica speaking, I'm just a little confused and need some clarification. You had it pumped, or them pumped every other week, but you stated also, but they were never, you didn't really need to? I don't understand why you did.
As a business owner, as a business owner, we wouldn't wanna run the risk of having anything happen on a Saturday, so if something happens and it's busy.
They were full enough, but not.
I, like I said, I would, I would need to get the information from Thielen's, they've never been close to full, never been close to full, we've never, we've never had to pump anywhere near that amount, I mean, on a truck, we're talking, you know, a couple hundred gallons, and, and a part of that, too, goes back to the type of kitchen that, that they use, I mean, they're doing sandwiches and salads and stuff, they're not, they're not, they're not utilizing a great deal of, of water for, you know, a variety of things, too, so.
Would he, would he, could he do it in one trip? Did he move?
Oh, yeah.
Off the pole tricks?
No, never, yep.
Is he, one of those big trucks is what, maybe about twenty-five hundred gallons?
Yeah.
Two thousand, okay. Kind of work backwards. So two thousand gallons every other week?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mike.
Without knowing the flow, and, and we can certainly do all kinds of mathematical arithmetic here to try to figure it out, I wonder if the correct way to go on this is to table it and let Mr. Guida at least have the opportunity to provide the pumping information to us so we can evaluate from at least that standpoint on, on whether we need the actual study with a flow meter for the daily flow, because right now, I, I have no idea what we're dealing with, but we have a design here and we don't know the future use, so those three things, they're just not coming together in my mind.
If I may address that, too, and you're, you're completely, in, in your right to request that information, I'd be happy to provide it at a later time. That being said, there's so many unique circumstances with this anyway, because if the next owner potentially, they may not wanna have a restaurant there at all, and then that would affect, and so that's why the designer, I think the way that it's written is a two, you know, a two-bedroom cabin, but like I said, I'm happy to provide it if that's what's necessary.
This is Mark speaking, Tim, any feelings on what Mike is saying? I'm kinda in the same line of thought as he is unless you would enlighten me in any way that would change my mind.
Can I ask?
Ken, go ahead, do.
The proposed site drain field that, for this east parcel, they found, they found an area where they could put in a drain field type one that could handle nine hundred and sixty-three gallons, is that right, is that what I understand? Isn't that what he says?
You read the.
It says your track two east shows that there's one, I'll say only one, but one type one drain field that can support a maximum daily flow of nine hundred and sixty-three gallons.
Yes.
So that's, and so, anything, any kind of use that would exceed that kind of level would be a problem. Right?
Yeah, and that's a really good point, to the future of any kind of use for, for putting in a septic and having a restaurant on site, it's probably not going to be a fit as far as that goes, because, I mean, I, I don't know the daily amount of flow average for a restaurant anyway, but I'm guessing it would exceed that pretty quickly.
Yeah, but how do you?
Oh, excuse me, Ken, this is Tim speaking, I guess there, there is a statement there in what Eric has up right now, I didn't see that, I didn't see that in my packet, that he doesn't have a foot of soil on, under the mound, that foot of undisturbed soil. So it's a bit similar to
Other one.
The last one we did.
And there's nothing in there that says how much deep of soil he found, nothing in the analysis?
I looked through there and I found twenty inches and eighteen. Thirty-four. It, it was really hard to follow. Yeah, eighteen.
So it's zero to ten, and then ten to eighteen?
Yep.
So it's marginal?
Yeah.
It's not twelve, which it has to be, right?
Right, but.
Okay, can I ask one more question? The west parcel, it says there's two sites for a three, three-bedroom home, so we would put a condition on that parcel for a maximum of a three-bedroom home? I mean, it says that, it has two sites with the drains, with two areas that could handle the flow from three bedrooms. Someone wanted to build a home with six bedrooms, do, do we put a condition or, or just say, all right, fine, that's, it's got two sites for a three-bedroom home, we don't have to put any kind of condition on, on approval for that, for that?
Eric speaking, the, the challenge, Ken, is that this property's not in a shoreline area, so we don't require permits for putting structures up, so there'd be no way, there'd be no trigger mechanism for us to catch when somebody was gonna build on there and potentially exceed a three-bedroom home.
Yeah, okay.
So it'd be a buyer beware situation.
So the point is that we shouldn't even, I shouldn't even be thinking about a condition on that, just accept that that's, one tract has two drain fields, okay?
This is Tim speaking, is there any way to put a flag on, on a parcel that would have a type three requirement?
Well, I suppose if, if you put a condition on the, if you were to entertain a motion to approve, you could put that as a condition, and then they would have to come through our office for getting the septic permit, and if we saw a design for greater than a three-bedroom system, that would be a flag that we'd catch, but it wouldn't prevent somebody from putting a three-bedroom system in and then building a structure that has more bedrooms than that.
And just to clarify, we do have, the, the one site is approved as a, as a type one, we just don't have the second site.
Well, it's a type one if you don't exceed nine hundred and sixty-three gallons per day.
Right.
Which is back to Mike's point, we'd like to be, have, we'd like to know what Summer Hill Farms today is using. Mike, do you wanna make a motion to table it?
Denied, or did not, okay? No, I, I, I don't know.
Eric says I didn't, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Veronica?
Yeah, this is Veronica, before we move too much further, I have one more question if this, I'm thinking we're going along the lines of possibly tabling or making a motion, but during the lot views, was there any concern with the seventy-five foot road right-of-way with the type one and type three systems in that area? um, was there any concern with the seventy-five-foot road right-of-way with the type one and type three systems in that area? Because in my opinion, the, the, for, the application was lacking information. We didn't have a seventy-five-foot road right-of-way setback. We didn't see any stakes put out at all for the type one or type three drain fields, and we didn't have the flow measure records at all. So I'm just trying to move forward to see where we're going and what direction, because those are three pretty important parts that we didn't have.
That's, that's, that lone pitcher I had that I estimated, and I believed there was, but I did not have it taped. I thought there was.
Which shows a setback line here. Oh, that's, that, that's in quite a ways from where the current tanks are. I think that's a second c- condition, flow and establish where the road setback.
And stakes for the...
Where the easement and then setback line is.
And stakes for the system.
Yeah, is there really space there for two systems? So it's whatever this, whatever the ro- road easement is, and then what, twenty feet? Setback from a, from easement for a drain field?
No.
No setback from it? So where, so wherever the Highway seventy-one's easement line is, would be, is where we could move, put a train, drain field up to it. Okay.
Mike, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Mike. I make the motion that we table this application and the applicant provide us with, uh, the best knowledge he has based on pumping for the flow for this past however many years he has that information, and that the seventy-five-foot right-of-way be established and the system be staked out, so we can observe that.
The drain field be staked out, yeah, okay.
Anybody with a second?
This is Timothy. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, um, by Mike to, uh, table this with some recommended conditions, and a second by Timothy. We'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
It's Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Your application has been tabled. Um, Eric, could you give me clarification for us again? The timeframe that that leaves to the applicant to, to act on this, or how that works again, if you could?
Sure. So the sixty-day rule governs that, and that says that the county needs to take action on the application within sixty days of the application date. Or when the county feels that it needs additional time to review, it can extend its review period to a maximum of a hundred-and-twenty days from the application date, if we submit written notice to the applicant that we're doing that. So I'm already making notes to that effect, that we'll extend our review to a hundred-and-twenty days, and then that, uh, we'll place it on next month's agenda as a placeholder. If we get the information in time, we'll hear it then. If not, I think we'll still be safe at the December meeting.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, what is the deadline for the, to submit that information for the next meeting?
As soon as possible, because our application deadline was today.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next application is variance application forty-four dash V dash twenty-three by Vicki Ronkowski. Lots five and six, Crescent Beach, Section One, Township one forty-five. Range thirty-two, Farden Township on Wolf Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel zero seven point three-nine point zero-zero-three-zero-zero and, and zero seven point zero-one point zero-three-two-zero-zero. Applicant is requesting to amend the stormwater plan that was required to be implemented as condition number two of variance forty-eight dash V dash twenty-one. Do we have the application, applicant here? We do not, it appears. Okay. All right, well, let's... Okay, um, my board have any comments or questions in general about this application?
I thi, this is Ken. I think the, the new plan absolutely meets the same requirements we established from the prior variants, and that, um, if, uh, the change is done per, uh, the, um, surveyor, uh, plan of nine-twenty-two oh-two-three, uh, this is, uh, probably acceptable.
Okay.
This is Veronica speaking. Just for the record, since the applicant's not here, I don't mind, um, reading out a statement. Uh, the application seeks to amend the condition number two of variance forty-eight V twenty-one by requesting that the required location of one of the two stormwater management plan infiltration basins be allowed to be moved, because the septic tank for the septic system was installed for the new home, allowed to be built by V, forty-eight V twenty-one was placed in that originally approved infiltration basin area. It is unknown why the installer placed it there, so the variance forty-eight V twenty-one, um, allowed the lot to be redeveloped with a new house. Four conditions were placed on the variance, and the applicant thus has proposed the new location for that in, required infiltration basin and is seeking approval.
Okay. I'm gonna open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anybody else with any comments or ready to make a motion? Go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we approve and accept the staff findings of fact, and note that number four should be checked. Yes, there's no check mark there.
Okay. This is Mark. I'll second Mike's motion, and he's, uh, adopted staff findings of facts. Um, so we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
It's Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. The application's been approved. Okay, excuse me. Um, now we're moving on to variance application forty-five dash V dash twenty-three by Schneeman Cabin LLC, part of government lot five, Section fourteen, Township one forty-one. Range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Lower Bottle Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel one six point one-four point zero-one-six-zero-zero. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Section nine oh-two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for grading work performed in a steep slope that exceeded permissible volume. We have the applicants here, so if you could give us your name and address?
Uh, my name is Chris Schneeman. Uh, home address is fifteen sixty-one Park Circle in Mendonites, Minnesota. This is concerning two oh-two oh-one Hermit Lane on Lower Bottle Lake. With me is...
And this is Shannon Henrickson, Touch of Eden Landscaping. Address is sixteen oh-four Commerce Avenue South, Park Rapids. And we did the landscaping after the building was constructed.
Okay, can you just tell us briefly what happened, what you're asking here?
Uh, well, you've got the narrative up. I won't reread the whole thing, but essentially, I, we were granted a variance where a non-conforming area, and the variance, um, uh, allowed us to build a, a new cabin, uh, setback, uh, beyond the hundred-foot normal requirement. And, uh, in that variance hearing, uh, we had, had questions about making sure that it wasn't a bluff zone and so forth. Ultimately, it was approved, uh, and, um, in the process of a new variance being granted at last month's meeting, uh, for my sister, who's in the same property zone, uh, the, um, uh, the original variance from two thousand and two on my property, uh, my building, uh, was relooked at, and it was determined that there was too much soil moved on the slope. We were completely unaware that that was, would be an issue. Had we known, we would have certainly included that in our two thousand and twenty variance request to say that the displacement of the soils for the build-out uh, was going to go right in, on the property. And, um, so we're here, uh, getting that corrected. That's the bottom line.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the board?
I don't have any.
Um, I, I really don't have any. This is Mark speaking. Um, what, excuse me, what you've done out there, I'm perfectly okay with, so... Um, unless the board has any other issues, I'll probably open for public comment. Okay, we're gonna open for public comment. We need you to step up to the podium there, give us your name, address, write it into the log.
My name is Richard Aho. I live at, uh, two zero three five six Hunter Road, which is fairly close to these guys. Um, that was a restriction that you guys put on there last time for building the new cabin that was coming in, that it was supposed to be removed, and now they're asking not to remove it. I'd like to know what the heck. I mean, if, if someone like me, you know, I've asked for a variance before to bring in stuff to fill down in front, to level off a little rough area, and you can't do it. So I don't know why everything is always okay. We're just gonna go through with this. I, I just don't get it. There's been other variances along our road that have been denied, and every time a Schneeman variance comes up, it's okayed. And I just don't understand that. This removal of this yardage was put in the last variance, last month, that you guys had for the building of the new cabin. It had to be out by, I think you said, July fourth of next year. And now he's going for, uh, variance to say, I don't want to remove it. I'd like to know what the heck's going on.
I'm confused. It was a different, different structure.
I believe, um, last month, we approved a, uh, variance for an additional cabin on the overall parcel.
With conditions that this had to be taken care of, this violation had to be taken care of. So that is exactly what the applicants are doing. They received their violation letter, and they are moving forward to try to correct their violation in order, they have several options, and the, can you pull up the violation letter, please? The violation letter also states the actions that you can take. There's, there's the opportunities that they had to correct this violation. And they chose to apply for an after-the-fact variance application in order to move forward. Granted, it was a mistake the applicants made, as they had already discussed with us that they made the mistake in doing that in, in the beginning, and now they're trying to move forward and do the proper thing and apply for the after-the-fact variance. That's the exa, that, just for clarification for you, that was the condition that was placed on the prior variance that was approved, that this had to be, this violation had to be taken care of before they could get a permit to start building.
Right, and I'm just saying that the only way to do it is to remove it. You can't sit there and say, okay, we're gonna give you, you know, if it's not done, a thousand-dollar fine or whatever it's stating.
Unfortunately, sir, I think if they were to remove the, the retaining wall, then that would be detrimental to the building, to the residence. I think it's important that they retain this vegetative area for the structure of the residence. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Veronica. Any other comments you have?
No.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Ramlo, two-six-six-five-six Island Air Drive, Park Rapids. It, it does seem to me that the, uh, the applicant and the landscaper responded quickly. Uh, what I don't see here is the excavator, um, who, who was the excavator and why didn't they know what they were doing? Uh, in terms of, um, yardage removal. Do you have any idea who the excavator was?
Uh, the, the general contractor was Cheyenne Building, Barry Munson, and he hired, um, A R C. Uh, Warren Scouton out of Nevis to do the excavation, and Burton did the, uh, foundation. Uh, but there was no fill. I, I really want to make sure that that's clear. We did not bring fill in. Uh, the displacement was strictly that lower level of the walkout is the only sand that was moved. And, um, uh, and it is perplexing. I think this, and you know, this is purely opinion because of a surprise to me. I don't think there were very many people that were aware of the steep slope, uh, requirements.
My, my concern is that the, uh, the expert should have been the excavator, and, uh, insofar as I think Eric or somebody in your office visually said, hey, this is way too much. To my mind, it should have been obvious to, uh, any, any licensed excavator what they were up to, and that they're the ones that should have been held responsible. And I'm wondering what, what actions this board or what can be done to prevent that kind of negligence in the future. Because I think that's where the problem lies. It's not with, uh, I mean, maybe, maybe the homeowner, landowner has to sign off on it, but the excavator is, is the person that should, under the general, that should know what's going on before they do these things that, uh, they should be clearly aware of. That's just my, my comment. So, so I would encourage this board to figure out, um, how do you hold or how do you inform, and then hold, uh, these folks accountable. And maybe, maybe it's somehow, I don't know, it's at the state level. I mean, contractors have to do, uh, continuing ed stuff every two years. Um, you know, we have requirements for aspects of that, and maybe something like this should be incorporated or something, but I'm, I just find it odd that, uh, the excavator, um, grossly, it appears violated the, the ordinance in terms of, uh, soil removal.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment. Any other comments or questions by my board?
This is Veronica speaking. I, I will just, um, address some of the public comment or one of the public comment. I don't disagree with the gentleman that, but it does fall back as the applicant is already working forward to correct. It does fall back to the applicant, along with your contractors, to do your due diligence to make sure that they're upholding the Shoreland Management Ordinance. Obviously, there was an airmaid there doing their best to correct the violation. Again, though, that we can't hold one person accountable over another. It's the applicant's. That's their responsibility, and they're working on it to make it move forward in the right direction.
Anybody else?
I was... Was it never addressed, or was it not clear that this, um, bank, if you will, or slope did meet the requirement of a steep slope? I mean, the twelve percent at over fifty feet. I mean, it wasn't in the original forty-five, uh, V twenty thing. Is that because nobody realized that it was in fact a steep slope? Or it was marginal and, and therefore assumed not?
We never got any, we didn't know the word steep slope was even in the shoreline ordinance man. It, uh, it, it didn't come up. We knew and were cautious about making sure that we had it surveyed properly and that the county had been out to give us a determination on the bluff, but we're just unaware that there was a steep slope requirement as well, so...
Okay. Anybody else? Are you ready to make a motion? Are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the variance application forty-five V dash twenty-three, and that we accept the, um, staff findings of fact, and item four needs to have an X in the yes column.
This is Mark. I'll second Ken's motion.
Could I add that I would...
You could.
I would also add that we accept the six items, uh, under the after-a-fact add-on comments.
Yep.
Part of the record.
Okay. Okay, we've had a motion by Ken to approve this application, and a second by myself. Ken's suggesting we adopt staff findings and the six additional questions for an after-the-fact variance. Take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You'll get a letter in the mail from Eric's office.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, our, excuse me, there next is variance application forty-six dash V dash twenty-three by Dirk Fisher, part of the southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section twenty-two, township one forty-five, range thirty-three, Helga Township, parcel one one point two two point zero zero three one zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Five, Section one point oh three of the Subsurface Sewage Treatment System Ordinance to create two tracks that do not have the required minimum of two type-one drain field sites. And we have the applicant here. Give us your name and address for the record.
Dirk Fisher, four eight eight oh five, Row thirty-six, La Porte, Minnesota, five six four six one.
Okay, and a brief description of what you're asking for in this application?
So, we have approximately an eighteen-acre parcel that we'd like to make into a five in the balance, and neither one of them is able to support, uh, a type-two, um, system for a septic, but E, both of them will support a type, um, like, if my parcels, I mean, my types support. Each one will do a normal drain field system, and each one would do then a holding tank system. So, we would be within, um, the requirements by the state of Minnesota. And so, we're asking that we can go ahead and do the subdivision.
Okay. Any comments on this application?
This is Tim. I have a question. Do you think you would ever build a house or anything, uh, for that shop, Dirk? Rounded or anything? Or would you just always leave that a shop?
I don't, I don't really believe that we ever would. I, I just...
And you don't have a bathroom or a well or anything in there now?
No, we do not. It's, it's, to be technical, it's more of a storage location to keep trucks available to start when it's twenty below. And convenience of having it inside and other issues, but even the time we spend there working on our vehicles is, is very minimal.
And, um, I'm guessing, because I, I do know your family a little bit there, but, uh, that that's a relative that's proposing the business?
Say that again?
Is it a family member proposing the business?
Oh, yeah.
Building? Okay.
Yeah.
And, so that could be problematic and be in one, one whole piece?
Yes. I believe so. So, we're, we feel as advantageous to Fisher Trust to do this division.
Yeah, myself, well, I'm looking, uh, looking at that proposed site up there. I have no problem with the, his site up there and/or, uh, type-three up in that corner of the business. I think there's a...
So, you feel there's room for a...
I think there's room for...
Type-three as an alternate?
Yes.
Instead of a holding tank?
Yes, I think there's room for a type-three. Just looking at, me and Mike looked together at the, the woods, the, the trees, and the backside of that shop. It looked like a type-three could go in there, too, based on vegetation. But, uh, you, you could still put in a bathroom and, um, a holding tank for your shop.
Yeah, I, across this, that township road, there is a holding tank presently at the mini-storage.
I see.
That was just happened to be the mis... The decision was made at the time that there was an office in there. And so, I agree with you wholeheartedly that to the east of the present shop building, a, a system could go in there, and, but for us to feel that's reasonable to do at this time for the use of the building, that's not practical.
This is Mike, and I'm agreeing with, uh, Tim. When we, when we looked at it, it looked like, um, there's ample room on the shop site to put in two class-three systems. And, and I believe also it's quite possible for that on the, I believe there are two systems on the, uh, track closest to, uh, Highway seventy-one.
Anybody else with comments here in the board? I'm gonna open for public comment. What we're thinking? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Do we have any other concerns or comments on this application?
If, if you feel that there's space for either a holding tank or an alternate drain field on the shop site, there'd be no reason for us to think about a condition that, that could never be developed with water septic. You know, you, there's an except one. Do you think there's easily...
I'm, this is Tim speaking. I, I would just be silent on it myself. I, I, me and Mike looked at it. I think it's okay, but somebody would have to go through a lot of, uh, field, field work to, to do it.
Right, if, if the applicant ever chose to get a permit for that, he would have to have the licensed, uh, installer or designer design to see what is exactly feasible. So, I, I'm with Tim that being mute is, is fine on that particular track.
Anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Timothy. I'll make a motion to approve application forty-six dash V dash twenty-three. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. I say it is because I believe the type-three systems will work in there for the alternate sites.
And there's room.
For type-ones. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? Yes. A business on the seventy-one is, uh, reasonable and, um...
Excuse me, Tim, you could adopt Eric's staff findings for two, four, and five?
No, because I don't think his works.
Type one.
That won't work there?
His doesn't work.
It should, it should be a no-X, based on boards.
Yes, that business is there, and there's room for a septic and alternate to take care of the business that's being proposed. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current owner and prior property owners. Yes, because there is a low wetland that separates it besides an impervious parking lot on the shop side. So, using one side to the other doesn't make sense. So, and, um... Number four. Yes, there's already businesses along the...
You could accept the staff for four and five.
Yeah, I can, uh, adopt the staff's findings.
Okay, this is, uh, Mark. I'll second Timothy's motion. So, we've got a motion by Timothy to approve this application. And he's given us answers for, uh, findings on one, two, and three, and accepted, adopted the staff's findings for four and five, and, um, no other conditions. So, a motion by Timothy, a second by Mark. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This Mike, I vote aye.
And Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Your application's approved. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Mail from Eric's office. Thank you. Okay, our next variance application forty-seven dash V dash twenty, excuse me, dash twenty-three by Michael Solin, part of Government Lot Three and Four, Section Eight, Township one forty-one, range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Picaro Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one six point zero eight point zero zero seven one zero. Applicant is requesting variances from Part One, Section nine oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to create two shoreline recreational use areas for a proposed RV camping area use of the property and intensive vegetative alteration in these two areas and several steep slope areas on the property. Part Two, Section nine oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed grading in a steep, in steep slopes that will exceed permissible volume, and Part Three, Section one oh one three point six B of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to exceed twenty-five percent impervious surface area threshold in tier two, in tier two, two sixty-seven dash five thirty-four, ordinary high-water mark setback. We've got the applicant here, so if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Michael Solin, thirty-eight oh nine Heather Valley Road, apartment one twelve, Sheboygan, Wisconsin.
Okay. Did you go over these parts for, of this application for us and what you're looking to do?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks. For this particular application of variance, I am looking to, for two recreational areas. One, which would be a waterfront area on the northeast end of the property, and one on the northwest part of the property. The other part would be to, for grading purposes, um, in steep slope areas to get permission to move due to the amount of material, permission to fill in low areas with some of the higher areas around there. And there'd be some steep slopes that would be left, and grade those at two-one, and re-vegetate those in grasses. Those areas wouldn't be meant to be traversed by pedestrians or anything like that. The other one is the impervious surface in tier two exceeding the twenty-five percent. Uh, one thing I do wanna note is we didn't get some clarification in regards to open space, and, um, as a result, we will look to reduce the number of sites, three of them in tier two and five of them in tier three, so that we comply with the ordinance in that regard.
Can you tell me which sites you're going to be removing?
Yes.
Please?
Would you ask Veronica?
Yeah, the applicant said that he's going to be removing some RV sites in tier two and in tier three, and I would like to know which sites are going to be removed, reduced.
Could you talk closer into the mic?
Yeah, in, uh, tier two, site forty-two, site forty-six, site forty-seven. In tier three, site twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-one, for a total of eight sites.
Thank you, sir.
Could you read off those last in tier three?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-one.
What about them?
He's, he's eliminating those.
Eliminating?
Yep.
Oh, completely?
Yep, eight sites.
Could we, could you ask him to read off tier two also?
Tier two sites that he, could you read off the tier two sites again?
Tier two would be forty-two, forty-six, and forty-seven.
Thank you.
We'll also reduce the impervious surface in both of those areas as well.
Oh, down here? I can't read this one. Says one, two, four, five, six here, or five, and the other two are where? There's forty-three, forty-four. What are the other two?
Forty-two, forty-six, and forty-seven.
Correct. So, it'd be the one that's just to the right of a cabin, and then the lower two from that.
Okay. There are forty-six. Okay.
This is Mark speaking. Eric, would you suggest that we deal with each of these individually? And decide on those in, before we, like, for instance, we do Part One, then move on to two and three? Would you recommend that, or is there no?
It's up to the board, but that certainly would be an approach you could take.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Let's, let's address Part One first, if we have no other thoughts on that and questions.
This is Ken. Oops, I gotta flip to the picture here. You're wondering, uh, the northeast, I'll call it northeast, uh, recreational area where the docks and stuff are. You show a hundred fifty by seventy-five feet deep area. Do you have any idea that the line you drew, how far it is from the ordinary high-water mark?
I don't, that I don't know.
The, the reason I'm getting at is, is this is a complex project, and I know there's a lot of concern from people on the lake because it is a small, maybe somewhat sensitive lake. And, um, the way you've laid out that recreation area is very inconsistent with what would be allowed for a residential property. We allow twenty by fifteen feet right at, at the lake or in the, um, near the lake, um, on a hundred fifty-foot width, and virtually, and no, pretty much no vegetation removal for the first fifty feet in the shore-impact zone. The way you've drawn this, and then the whole area above it... The way you've drawn this and then the whole area above it would be, would be very much, what's the word, non-conforming or inconsistent with what a riparian lot would be. And so I was struggling with how to come up with, what am I trying to get at? I'm uncomfortable just saying, yeah, we approve a recreational area on the northeast area seventy-five by a hundred fifty. It says nothing about how close to the lake, how much vegetation removal, uh, and what might be on it. So I'm uncomfortable with that. And, and I'm thinking that to be consistent and to make sure that we're not doing anything more traumatic, can I say, than what a residential owner would be. I wish I had more definition of it. And, and in my mind, you probably have maybe on the whole property, probably eighty equivalent residential lots. You probably want to put, put at least one rec area over on that little bump out. Uh, you're gonna want one by your personal dock. Okay?
No, I would have my personal dock in that, you know, be designated towards my family in that same waterfront recreation area.
Okay, well, anyway, the point is, I don't think any more than the equivalent of, say, six riparian lots, which would maybe give you a hundred twenty feet equivalent at the twenty. And then not, and then no vegetation removal within fifty feet of the lake would be kind of conditions I'd want to put on a variance. I don't want it wide open. If we just say, yeah, you can build a rec area there, I could see the whole thing, uh, mowed flat. Tables, things like that, and that would be very inconsistent with what we would allow with a residential. And I tried very hard over the last three, four days to think about how, how would I put constraints or conditions on that rec area that would meet that and, and allow you to have. I mean, a rec area is very, I, I, very, very logical, reasonable kind of thing to do, but, but I wouldn't want it to be more, more inconsistent with what good shoreline management things would be. And I know you're right up, and I know your attitude is very much towards protecting the lake and controlling it, but I would, I guess I'm saying to my colleagues, I, I'd like to say, if we're gonna approve this and the other rec area, we should try to frame it within the fact that, that it will be done consistent with what rec, what a riparian lot would be, which is primarily fifty feet shore impact zone, no alterations, uh, and, and good vegetation to prevent runoff. With the allowance that you could have the equivalent of a twenty by fifteen place right by the lake or somewhere down near the lake. Yeah, but without, you know, I couldn't walk over to the bank and look down the other day. You saw me hobbling around. So, um, I, I don't know how we get through this tonight in terms of allowing regi-, uh, which I think is reasonable to rec areas, but putting some conditions on it that make it more consistent to what a riparian lot would be. So help me out, colleagues. And, you know, and one of the things I, you know, I.
This is Tim, and I agree with you to some extent, Ken, but it, it does have fifteen hundred feet of shoreline and it is riparian. And people are coming to use it as riparian too. They, there's, we could go look at all the yards that got their lawnmower tired in the lake.
Yeah, but when you do greenfield, you expect the first fifty feet shore impact zone. Ordinance is very clear about it has to remain in natural vegetation form.
And it can be. But who says they can't mow it? It's already open naturally.
But with.
That's vegetation.
High vegetation that prevents runoff. You make it, you make it like a lawn.
But this is Veronica speaking.
It's gonna be runoff, so.
I just have a, so he has fifteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty or fifteen fifty, I've seen two different numbers of shoreline. And he's only requesting in this particular spot about a hundred and fifty feet-ish. I mean, that's the, the width that he has across. But the rest of it is natural vegetation. He's only asking this one section to be recreation use, mowed or whichever.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you in what I'm saying in the following way. If you, if you, forget a campground. If you were gonna develop this with riparian lots.
I understand your correlation.
You do about eight, okay? Each one of those is allowed a twenty by fifteen shoreline rec area, and then from the shore back fifty feet, the vegetation should not be altered. That's what our ordinance says. Okay, now if you took, let's say, I figure about eight riparian lots is the best you could do. If you say, all right, one over, one over, or two over on the Holly Road, and the other ones where he has his personal dock and so on, if you did the six, a hundred twenty feet, that's what I said. You go a hundred twenty feet, fifteen feet back, but then, then from there back to fifty feet should not be altered. And that would be consistent with riparian lots. Which, which goes to be more consistent with protecting this somewhat sensitive lake. I know it's hard to sit here without specific drawings and stuff to do it. But I personally, and you guys all got a vote on it, I personally am uncomfortable with just saying, yeah, you can have a seventy-five by a hundred fifty-foot, uh, um, recreation area in that northeast corner. And I could envision a mowed lawn that people, right down to the lake, seventy-five feet back, which is about as contrary to good shoreline management practices that I could think about. Okay, so.
This is, this is Mike. Um, I'm basically in agreement with Ken in, in, hear me out here on, on some arithmetic. If, if you have a hundred and fifty feet by seventy-five feet roughly, that's eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
We allow three hundred square feet per residential lot.
Yeah.
This would be the equivalent of thirty-seven residential lots. It's too much. I'm also in favor of specifically restricting the size on the one we're looking at right here. I'm not, I haven't arrived at a number that I'm comfortable with, but it's considerably less than what's being proposed. But also that fifty-foot buffer of an un-mowed area outside of a pathway to the, um, dock facilities.
This is Veronica speaking. I'm not, I don't disagree with your numbers. I understand that. But this is not a residential lot. This is a twenty-six acre lot. This, you know, we can't count it. We cannot, it's not equal. It does not equal.
Yeah, but you're, we're here with a variance because nothing's allowed.
Exactly, but we can't treat it as it's a, as a residential lot though, because it's not a residential lot.
So my argument, my argument is the best use of this is to treat it to, to be equivalent as if there were riparian lots. That's what I'm trying to get at.
But I don't understand why it has to be equivalent, because it's not.
For the protection of the lake. Why, why do we have standards? Why do we have twenty by fifteen rec area and a fifty-foot no-mow zone on lakes? Because science says that's what you need to prevent runoff and degradation to the lake.
I one hundred percent agree with that. There's a lot of other shoreline that is involved in this particular piece that's going to have lots of preventative runoff issues. This, we're only talking about one section of a shoreline.
That's what I'm giving the two, six lots, twenty feet, a hundred twenty feet, fifteen. That's the equivalent of those that would take that old shoreline, okay? But that the first fifty feet should remain natural. That's the whole point. So I, I don't know how to sit here and put that condition on it, but, but I think it would be unreasonable for us, just what Mike says, eleven thousand square foot rec area in an area that at best would be maybe twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred, that we would allow with riparian lots. Why should we allow a campground on a sensitive lake to have far more potential runoff than if it were riparian lots? That's, that's my issue. I don't know how to get around it. I don't know, um, or, or leave it open to come back with a specific layout. Cause I don't, I don't know. There seems to be a steep bank there. If it were like, all right, nothing on that bank, at the crest of the bank, you get your twenty-foot by fifteen or twenty-foot equivalent times six and fifteen, and from there back to fifty feet from the, from the edge of the or- ordinary high watermark would be un-mowed. That, that in my mind would be a nice layout for that. And then be back beyond fifty, you know, we're supposed, only supposed to put partial vegetation, or I don't care. In this case, he's constrained by that forest. I wouldn't try to say to control anything beyond fifty feet, because he's gonna want to put picnic tables and stuff like that. I'm uncomfortable allowing lawn-level mowing right up to the lake, so to speak.
Well, I'm comfortable giving him the same as, um, residential for a rec site to, to a certain size. Because that's what people want to come and do. And some might not, and some might, to use that lake. Like, uh, fifteen by twenty.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm proposing to get the equivalent fifteen by twenty for six lots.
But you're saying not to mow it, so I gotta walk through it and get wood ticks.
No, 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 you're allowed, you're allowed a access path. Our shoreline standards.
So there's gonna be fifteen people, different families, all gonna just go down the same path?
Maybe you could have two, okay, or three paths. Actually, if you look at the bank, there aren't gonna be too many other places we're gonna go. There's gonna be eight, gonna have to cut a path down to the dock. Okay.
Okay, this is Mark speaking. A couple of questions. First one is for Eric. Eric, if we handle each of these parts, meaning we debate, we, do we do public comment for each one? Or are we going to do public comment on the whole application? What's your take on that?
It's up to the board again, but I would be clear before you seek public comment as to which way you're going, so that the public knows whether they. You know, some, someone potentially could then have three minutes speaking on each part.
Mister Chair, I would propose that we discuss them, Parts One, Two, and Three, but we make a motion in its entirety to cover the entire application. And public comment would have the opportunity to discuss One, Two, and Three, so a three-minute total for the entire public, each person's public comment, rather than having the opportunity to have three times the public comment.
Okay, so well, you're suggesting we, we discuss all three of these parts first?
It's okay.
Okay, okay. I'm, um, I guess I'm up in the air, Ken, about your suggestion versus what I'm hearing a little bit from the other side. Veronica, did you have a comment?
Yeah, this, Mister Chair, may I ask the applicant, what are you proposing your recreation, recreation area to be? How do you envision this seventy-five by a hundred and fifty foot? What are you proposing?
What I was envisioning was having an area that's maintained well by mowing the grass and maintaining it. And then obviously there'd be the docks and a little swim area. I do struggle with the, hearing the comments about how vegetation's been so far back when many of the lake owners I've seen have mowed down to the lake and it's much wider than what's being described, what a typical homeowner would have or be allowed.
Thank you.
Any other comments on, or questions on this Part One before we move on and talk about Part Two?
Can I get the size, um, please, of the, the other recreation area? I mean, I've got a photo, but I don't have size. Do you have a size description in your application?
I don't, but I was open to the Environmental Services Department kind of, you know, what would be reasonable kind of a vegetation along the shoreline. There's a couple, as you saw when you're out there, open areas that I'd like to have, you know, one or two of those where you can still see the lake, but still keep natural vegetation kind of a border around, and then keep the interior part mowed. There'd be picnic tables out there.
What was the first measurement, Eric, please? Two-twenty, thank you.
Right now, there's kind of a natural kind of border that does kind of go around where you can see where the grass is before you get into kind of.
How do you propose your, um, guests to get to this particular location?
We'd look to have a trail that would cut to Holly Road and be approximately a hundred and twenty-five or so feet and maybe a hundred and fifty feet of walking along the road to that path.
So during lot views, when we walked from the one end of the property to that area, we, I did not take the road. I took a path. I did not walk on the road to get, or did I, just a small bit, I guess.
Right, there was a small little bit.
Just a small section. Okay, so it'd be coming out that same area and then back on. So the majority of the walkway would still be on your property?
Correct.
And you said the short distance on the Holly Road is approximately how long?
A hundred and twenty-five, no more than a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
This is Mike. You're not proposing any type of parking area down there?
No, not unless the board wants me to have something like that instead.
I, I just wanted to make sure that's not part of a proposal.
I'd like to put it up, you know, talk to township or see what, you know, for high visibility signs, it's alert the public. It's not a lot of traffic, although by at least alert them there's pedestrians potentially traversing between the two pieces of land.
Sure, absolutely. No further questions from me, Mister Chair.
Any else with questions on this Part One?
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that area over there could have one shoreline rec area if there's even room. Other than that, just give a fifty-foot buffer and, um, do whatever you want inland from it. I'm not worried about that one very much. It's the other one.
So going back, Ken, to, to the first one that he had pulled up there, you're looking for a fifty-foot no-mow on that hundred and fifty or what? Could you go back to that one, Eric?
We should go through the two and three and get all that, and then we can come back around. I'm thinking that that's gonna be maybe controversial, two and three not, and we can split it into two things instead of three.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll move on and we'll just, uh, we'll move on to Part Two of the application. Reading the extensive, I'll read the short version of that, which is, um, Section nine-oh-two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for proposed grading in a steep slope that will exceed permissible volume. Any questions or concerns about this? We've got.
This is Mike. These numbers, your, everything that was calculated was with the campsites that you're now eliminated included. Do you have revise, any revised figures for either of these, uh, for any parts of this application based on the revision here?
Not yet. From the engineer, as, you know, recently just came into some of that information on clarification on open space. I do have some, what I did, you know, quick math on it, what it would be, but if you want to hear that.
Sure.
So for Tier Two, it looks like it would be a reduction of impervious space by at least one percent. And then with Tier Three, at least three percent reduction in impervious surface. It's gonna be, I anticipate Tier Two would be a little bit more, but I need to have our engineer to do the math on exactly how, like, Site forty-seven, how it all splits out. Cause that crosses the boundary of Tier Two and Tier Three in regards to the impervious surface. But when I take back that out, the twelve-fifty, and then the gravel approach in the Tier Two, which is two-sixty-four, you know, I, I see a reduction at least of one percent.
And will it affect any of the figures in the grading?
No, the grading plan is still intact.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, this is Mark again, we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan that was prepared, but we're also needing a non-point source discharge elimination system permit from Minnesota Pollution Control Agency prior to commencing any grading work because the project will affect more than an acre of ground, which is the trigger for needing such a permit. So that, has that been applied for, or?
I'll apply one as soon as I, where they get approval.
Once this, okay, okay. Any questions on this grading? I don't have any concerns about it myself.
No.
No, this is Veronica speaking, I don't either. The Shoreline Management Ordinance does not regulate grading work done outside of the 100-foot ordinary high-water mark setback. That is not in a bluff impact zone or in a steep slope, so most of this grading and such is done beyond the 100-foot setback. And it has lots of the existing Norway pine plantation, mature forests, and wetlands between the proposed campground area and the lake minimize the potential for any soil that might erode during construction.
Another questions about part two? Or comments? In part three, we've already decided now that the impervious surface is going to go down slightly, is that correct? Okay. Any other concerns about that? Okay. So I'm thinking I'm gonna open public comment. So we'll do public comment, we, as before, ask that if you've submitted written public comment, and we don't, we ask that you don't come up and just repeat that. If you have something new to say, that's fine. We welcome your comments, we'll try to keep you on a three-minute per, per comment, so if you have public comment, now's the time to step up to the podium microphone. And we'll hear what you have to say. Give us your name, address on the log and give it verbally, and then give us your comments.
Thank you, Board, Commissioner. Good to see you here tonight. Nobody skipped out to watch Vikings game. It's usually not worth watching anyway, the way they played this year. I just got a few comments, I'm gonna, there's so many things to break down in this. So much dirt to be moved, so many rules to be broke.
Verbal name and address to-
Oh, Kirk Sale.
Yeah.
And 17-682, happy drive.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. So here's kind of my take on this, so we have seven, 1,500-foot of shoreline, it goes pretty cheap. So we have an out-of-state developer says, hey, I'm gonna buy that. So now we've gotta figure out how to put our campground in there. He gets a reputable firm out of Bemidji to come in and do the, says, here's how you can do it, but you need to break all the, I mean, get a variance, don't break the rules, get a variance first, so you can do all that. Last month, we were here for the sewer, and now we're here for all of these things, and I'm sure we'll be back. So I'm gonna break it down to, like you could did, for part one, for the lake access, the rec areas. The first, I agree with what I see on where they wanna do the 150 by 75, that's just an enormous playground gonna be there. And it certainly is, if sand is brought in or any alterations done in, that's all muck, all the way out. There's just lily pads and all the way out. We were there on Labor Day weekend, and I had my son getting the water about 100-foot out, and it's five feet. It's five feet of water, 100-foot out. So how are we gonna have a recreational, who's gonna wanna swim and that? So I have a lot of concerns about that, and I would hope that you would dial it back to, at least to be reasonable, so the rest of the residents and the lake, because, you know, that's actually where all the crappies spawn in the springtime. And we, we know that, I hope nobody else hears that back there, that that's where they're spawning, because we like to fish those. Rec area two, my concern there is this is a low, very low water year, and when the water comes back up, the only way to get that from the campground to that area is going to be walking on Holly Road. Well, that's just not safe. Just not safe. I don't wanna take a stroller with my kids to a picnic down there and run across that road, because I guarantee you traffic will increase on that road. And I know the township board is concerned about that also. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the amount of dirt that is gonna be moved in this. And I read from the staff report here that normally, it says, roughly 103.3 cubic yards of material could be moved in the steep slope areas on this property by permit. The application states that approximately 8,672 cubic yards of material will be cut and 3,185 cubic yards of material will be used to fill in. That's, so normally 103 cubic yards, and now we're up to 8,672. So I looked up what is steep slope, as somebody in previous variants didn't know what it is. Land and agriculture activity or development that is either not recommended or described as poorly suited to slope steepness and the soil characteristics of the site as mapped, described, and available in other technical reports. It is not for development, and that's where I came up with that. So I would hope that you could scale this back to a reasonable approximately of how many units are gonna be there, how much dirt's gonna be. If he can't do it with 103 cubic yards, go to 108, even double it at 200 cubic yards, not 8,000 cubic yards of this. So that's what I would request from the board. If it's not done, we could go back and have him resubmit with your conditions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Dubay. I'm an eight-month resident on Pickrow Lake before I go south, so my address there is 17631 Ivy Drive. Sorry, Eric.
It's okay.
At my age, I need, I need notes. It's not bad, though, I left the other 10 pages at home, so. But I'm, I'm here tonight because I am just vehemently against any variance over there. I was really glad to hear Ken speak up and talk about the mowing. I can't do it on my lot. And I, I had a large chunk of cattails floated in from the other side of the lake during a windstorm, and they've taken root and they're growing, and I know that if I went down to remove those, I'm one that would be in trouble, but anyway, I do oppose this campground period and the variance. If you listen to the local press and the community, there's nobody, I mean, hundreds of people have signed our petitions, you talk to people, there's nobody that thinks this is a good idea, and it's not. That, that whole bay is just shallow, muck, and it's just not set up for this kind of a project. And it was mentioned before, we get an out-of-state developer wants to come in and, and destroy our lake. And actually, it was, could be two lakes involved in this destruction because Blue Lake is right down the road, they have a much better landing, and a lot closer. So they're just as, in as much trouble as, as we could be. This is the fourth attempt to do some, a project like this on Pickrow Lake. The previous three times, the board has seen fit to deny it going in, because it just doesn't make sense. So hopefully, you'll understand. Take a look at it at some point in this whole process. I, I understand that Mr. Celine has made sure, um, excuse me, I'm getting a bit of a cold, but anyway, I know he's taken care of all the legal ramifications, he's, he's done his due diligence. He's crossed all the Ts, he's dotted all the Is. But at some point, common sense has to step in and take over. And I certainly hope the board will take a look at that lake. I was out at first light this morning with, with my dog, taking him for a walk, and as soon as I walked out of the door, I could hear the eagle across and coming from that property. And to destroy that lake. I have, for future reference, I'll be sending them. I have aerial photos and topographical maps from the DNR of that lake. That lake is 310 acres in high water. And it's, right now, there's maybe 30 acres of recreational water on that lake.
We're gonna ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay, well, that's all I had. But hopefully, hopefully, we can get some cooperates. And Ken, I thank you for staying on top of that 50-foot mowing because nobody else in here on Pickrow Lake can-
Thank you.
Move closer to the water.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'll try. Mary Griebler, 18593, Ithaca Drive.
Okay, and if you could write that in, too?
I tend to like numbers, they either make sense or they don't. And so I was looking at the numbers and trying to make sense and put things in perspective where I would understand actually what was being talked about on the impermeable surface, impervious surface. And one of the things that bothered me was that in the variance, there was an error made in how it was presented. Mr. Celine stated that the impervious surface of Holly Road, 5,800 square feet, was 1.9% of the impervious surface. And that's not true. It's 1.9% of the total area. And so you start going around that and you say, okay, Holly Road is 6.7% of the impervious. Okay, so you get there. And then, you know that the calculations all show that tier two is 28.4 impervious, 3.4 over. Well, we've taken two sites out now, so I can't redo my math that quickly, so we'll just bear in mind that. And he said he's got his percentage down to 1% over now. And I kinda disagree with that because he's taken two sites out of tier two. Taken two RV sites out. And when you're talking percentages, it's really hard to see what it actually means in terms of the sites. And so I played with the numbers, and I think my math is right. But if you accept 1250 as the impervious number for a site, and potential future development on the sites, adding decks and sheds and stuff that might happen because the guests leave things that cause impervious surface laying around, then you have 8.3 sites, too many in tier two. And that's 34% of the total sites that were in tier two. And if you made an exception and took Holly Road out of the equation, then the impervious total comes down to 27%, 2% or 6,000 square feet. And that turns into 4.8 sites, too many in tier two, or 20% of the total sites in tier two. So we've taken two out, but we're still several sites, too many in tier two, are not down to 1%, I don't think. So my point is, if you allow an overage here, we wanna see the numbers and check the math. And if, if you allow it, it's permanent. And you've gotta remember that there's a potential for future development, future expansion. And how is any overage here going to be handled in the future?
Okay.
I think these, both mine.
Karen Tim from 18576 Hideaway Drive on Pickrow Lake. My husband and I have been on Pickrow Lake for 11 seasons, and boy, one of the first things we learned is you don't boat anywhere close to this lot. Because nearly 400, or 100 to 150 feet out, it is dense above water and below water vegetation. So my question is, he has a swimming beach right there. How can people swim in all that vegetation? He also wants boat slips and two docks. How are you going to not chew up all that vegetation if you allow 20 boat slips, which if you count that, that's what that is, and two docks with three additional lifts, plus a swimming area? Looks to me like that's gonna be, the whole shoreline is gonna be destroyed in Recreation Area 1. So, and I agree with Ken, I appreciate it, we need that 50-foot. My husband and I never mow the 50-foot. And yeah, it is a pretty steep slope there, so for sure that 50 feet of unmoed grass needs to be, be in place. Recreation Area 2, if this campground is ever built, it's gonna dramatically increase the traffic on Holly Road. And you want people to walk, I don't care if it's only 125 feet. If they don't have a safe way to get to that recreation area, what is the point? As far as part two, all the dirt that he wants to move and affecting the wetland areas. As a farmer and having worked for a Natural Resources District in Nebraska, I'm keenly aware of how sensitive wetlands are and share the staff's concern for the sedimentation. I'm glad to hear that he's planning to remove 42, 46, and 47 from the plan, but I'd like to see 22, 23, 24, and the rental cabin removed. Those are all in close proximity to the wetlands. And as far as tier three, he's gonna remove some there also. That's pretty close to wetlands also. Remove them all, there's no point. He could move his second recreation area into that area. Yes, it's not gonna give you a view of the lake, but you could develop games that people wanna play, picnic areas where people aren't walking on the road. As far as exceeding the 25% surface that's allowed, I've kinda pretty much addressed that. I'd like to see a lot of these campsites removed. And it begs a question. When you have to move as much dirt as he has to move, is this lot really suitable for this type of a commercial application? So in conclusion, the staff has recommended that a condition be placed on all parts of this variance if you approve parts two and three. As an owner on Pickrow Lake, I really ask you to please place that variance there, or that condition, that if you approve these variances, nothing can be touched on this lot until his CUP is approved. However, given the variances that are being applied for, raises a concern.
Can you conclude?
Yep, I am. I would like to have Hubbard County Shoreline Ordinances that are in place to protect the environment honored by denying all three parts of this variance. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. All right. So I think we'll go back to, uh, part one. Eric, would you pull up that picture again that I asked you for on that, um, Recreation Area One? There we go. So we're back at, um, the controversial area, one of them here. If I could ask Ken to elaborate for me again what he would like to see with this area.
Okay. Clearly, the process is various variances for things that are obvious that are not consistent with the ordinance need to be cleared up before the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit in general would lay things out in much more detail than what exists right now. So that's in the future, two things. And I've been sitting here thinking, um, what I, what I would suggest is that we could say, we approve the two recreational areas with the condition that they meet residential lot requirements for the shore impact zone, which, you know, vegetation, platforms, um, structures, or all those things per, okay, requirements for shore impact zone as laid out in section nine oh one, sections two through five, and section six oh one point three of the shoreline management ordinance. Those two sections describe what you can do in the shore impact zone in terms of vegetation, structures, and so on. And then when the conditional use permit comes around, or when he starts looking at that and says, hmm, I'd like, I, here's, here's more detail. Maybe have to come back with another variance, this is exactly what I'm proposing. But for getting us through this process tonight, I would say, I would be okay with saying that we approve the two rec areas with that condition, that they meet residential lot requirements for shore impact zone area as specified in sections nine oh one point two through five and six oh one point three of the shoreline management ordinance. And that basically is specifying what happens or can happen in the shore impact zone. That's my way of getting out of, getting home and find out how bad the Vikings got beat. Packers got beat yesterday, so I'm mad anyway, so.
Anybody else with comments on Ken's suggestion?
Are you proposing then that he doesn't get any rec area like a residential on the shoreline? Is that what you're saying?
No, he gets what is, he gets.
The mowable part.
If he follows those, he will not be able to mow the first fifty feet.
Okay, that's what I wanna know.
At least have to have.
I would vote against that.
He would at least have to have vegetation that acted like a buffer. Okay, you can't greenfield it right to the two inches or what you would do with grass. I mean, you've walked down the, how rough it is. You're gonna have to, if you wanna do that, you're gonna have to grade that whole area to do it. But what I'm saying is, he's gotta stick with the fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark, just like residential people do. But he can have structures down there. He can have a recreational area. Those are all, all in those sections. The twenty by fifteen I'm talking about.
Twenty by fifteen for thirteen-hundred feet of shoreline? Is that what you're saying?
For the number of, for the number of residential lots that he could actually plot on that property, which I believe is somewhere between seven and eight. And if he wanted to combine it in that area, I don't have a problem with that. Okay? It's a matter of, is he gonna put it right down on the shoreline? Or build it up on the, on the, ahead, up on the bank, whatever? I'd like to see that in more in detail, and this is the best I could get us to that next step. Okay?
Veronica, did you have a comment?
Yeah, this is Veronica. So Ken, would you be more open, 'cause you keep referring to the fifty-foot mark? Would you be more open to the hundred and fifty by fifty instead of his proposed one fifty by seventy-five?
Would I say it again?
Would you be more open to approving this one hundred and fifty, all of it mowed except the fifty feet instead of the seventy-five there? 'Cause you keep referring to no mowing after the fifty feet.
I care about the fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark back. I didn't care if he goes a thousand feet beyond that. All the way back, he could take some of those trees, he could all the way back. You know, we do our shoreline, hundred feet total setback, fifty feet showing backs. So I don't know what that, he can, he can say seventy-five as long as the blue line is fifty feet from the shore. He can build as big as he wants if he's back outside the impact zone.
This is Mike. Generally, I'm in agreement with what Ken's saying. And the reason, one of the reasons that I would support what Ken's saying is without detailed plans of what exactly he's planning on doing here as far as grading, vegetation removal, alteration, I'm not comfortable by putting some conditions on it. And then if it comes forward for a CUP, those specifics can be addressed at that time. But I am also not comfortable, I'd like to see some sort of buffer between the ordinary high watermark, whether it's fifty feet. That sounds like a good number based on what's in the ordinance that we have right now.
This is Veronica speaking. My interpretation of a recreational area use in the shore impact, in the, in the shoreline, is the twenty by fifteen, it is a mowed area. It is, you know, where you can, to the ordinary high watermark setback. So restricting the applicant that first fifty feet, I disagree with. I, I don't think that that should be, should.
No, I said according to the residential lot requirements. That would still allow him to have a twenty by fifteen at the shoreline. Okay?
Well, if you're gonna go by giving him eight of those, then he actually gets twenty-four hundred.
I haven't decided how many, and that's what a conditional use permit, that would have it more in detail. You could decide what, what makes sense, and go back and look at it.
Okay, this, okay, I understand your, I understand your.
Yeah, so envision.
This is Veronica, I agree.
I have a problem with condensing into that area what would be allowed on probably the equivalent of eight residential lots. Okay? What I am concerned about preserving the first fifty feet as best possible.
Right. I, I, this is.
I don't know how else to do, get us out of this tonight than to say, approve them based on the fact that they'll meet residential lot requirements for the shore impact zone. And that's all spelled out in nine oh one point two dash five, two through five, and six oh one point three. You can look it up. It talks about structures. We allow certain structures. Forty-eight square feet for lake-related things. We allow a hundred and fifty feet for little platforms and stuff as long as there's, um, mitigated. All those things are built into that, and he could take advantage of all of that if I knew with, if he, if the details of the thing were there. So I, I, I spoke my piece.
Uh, this is Mark speaking. Does it make sense, we can't presume that we, any of those conditions that we were concerned about, Ken's or anybody else's, that we could simply, if we were looking at a CUP, impose them then as opposed to now? Eric, I'm gonna ask you that.
Eric speaking, I would say what you're saying would be able to be addressed in a CUP application is correct. I think you can also address some of those same things in conditions on any variance that you would potentially approve. So there's overlap on a lot of that.
What, what would a, a, a condition imposed here do if, if we had a different mindset on the CUP? What takes precedence?
The more restrictive, whichever that would be.
What we're doing here is saying, when he comes forward with a conditional use permit, he is allowed to have a couple of recreation areas. We're just saying those rec area, I'm saying those rec areas need to be in line with residential, shore impact zone requirements. So when he does a key, CUP, we're all gonna be looking at the details of what he's gonna do there. Okay?
I understand that.
And that comes as conditions in the CUP then.
Right, it just seems to me that, at least from where I'm sitting, we address that then and not now. That's, that's.
But we have, we have to, he's asking for a variance to have those recreational areas. The document he's given us shows that. So we're basically approving that, and I'm saying, no, I don't wanna approve eleven thousand square feet of completely revamped shoreline, right to the lake.
Mister, Mister Chair?
Go ahead, Mike.
One, one difference is variances that we impose are imposed. The CUP, we make recommendations to the county board. So we can certainly make recommendations to the county board, but the county board then decides whether to accept, alter, change, or deny whatever we submit to them.
Yep, go ahead.
I have a question for Eric.
Yep.
So Eric, if these variances are approved, that one, two, and three, is work allowed to start before the CUP will be approved or disapproved by the county board?
That would depend on whether they would put the condition on any approval that I recommended, that it would only be valid if the accompanying CUP is obtained.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the way I would see that. No work would commence and tell on if a CUP was approved. Yeah. Okay, well, I think we've, we've gotta make a decision here.
Mister Chair, may I just make a couple of comments about public comment?
Go ahead, Veronica.
So one thing pertaining to the public comment that was given was spoke directly to sand. I just wanted to make it very clear that if sand is not present now, sand cannot be brought in. So the applicant cannot make a sand beach because there is not a sand beach present. So do you understand that?
That's why I'm asking for.
Just the rec area and grass vegetative. So, um, I just wanted to be sure that we knew that a sandy beach was not gonna be coming forth ahead. That's not gonna, that's not the item here. I personally agree with A location, A for sure, one recreation lot. My only concerns on the second one, as I asked you earlier how you were gonna get there, and I couldn't remember how much road I walked on. I have some safety concerns about walking to the second one. However, I've walked to other trails and stuff where I've had access to the road to get to the trail, so I understand that, too. I am, you know, I can go either way. I don't really, I just.
People can drive cars and drop people off if they're having a picnic and then drive back, and one person walk fifty feet down the road, that's not a big deal.
I'm not terribly concerned with that. I, I agree with the locations using the already low spot on the point. Um, I, I agree with many of the staff's findings for the, the recreational areas. And again, I disagree with the size because it's not a residential lot. So I, I don't think that he needs to be constricted to something that's along eight lots. I think because it's, it's not a residential lot.
Also, Tim speaking, the, the DNR allows a certain width through the vegetation to get to the open water.
Yes.
It's not.
For a, able, for able.
Yeah. When we went through it the last time with the DNR, he said fifteen feet.
And, and you can go and ask for a permit to, um, remove additional vegetation right by the shoreline. They'll come and look and say, what is, you know, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense? You can take more vegetation away than just the path, but that's, that takes a permit from the DNR. And they are in general fairly liberal and what they'll let you do.
Okay, is anybody ready to make a motion?
For number one?
Yes.
For part one? Well, this is Veronica speaking. I would make the motion that we approve part one of the application for the two shoreline recreation use areas and adopt the staff's findings of facts with the correction to number one is the, there would be proposed thirty-nine sites, not forty-seven. Same with number two, there's only going to be thirty-nine sites.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody here?
This is Timothy, I'll second the motion.
You, you're making an app, recommendation or?
A motion.
Motion for.
Just part one.
Part one, and repeat it, please.
I'm just making the motion to approve part one of the application as presented, and I'm adopting the staff's findings of facts. And if I need to, on any, I also need to put on there, um, the staff recommendation, I guess it's only part twos and threes that we're concerned with on the grading work or campground layout.
Put it on all of them, please.
Okay, yeah. That condition be placed specifying that any grading work or campground layout must be done according to the various site plan, survey sketches, and cross-sections included in the application. And there's another one where the CUP must be approved prior to any of this.
And you're making the recommendation with none of the restrictions I'm proposing?
Correct.
She is not, right. Okay, we have, excuse me, we have a motion by Veronica to approve this application and a second by Timothy. Veronica's listed some conditions and adopted the staff's findings of facts, so we're gonna take a vote on this. So we'll start with Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
What conditions did you put on it, other than what's?
Work can't commence without.
Without the CUP.
Okay.
That it's null and void without the CUP.
I vote to deny.
Okay, um, Mike, how do you vote?
I vote to deny.
Veronica, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. So the motion is passed.
Excuse me, we still have part two to go through.
Okay, we'll move on to part two. Okay, anybody have concerns or questions or ready to make a motion on two?
A lot of these numbers and stuff have changed.
Could you ask him to take the comments outside?
Take it outside.
Yep, please, if we could, um, if you have comments or discussions that you wanna make among yourselves, please step out so we can move on with the next order of business here, which is to vote on part two. Anybody ready to make a motion on two?
Well, I just have, this is Veronica speaking, I just have some.
Comments?
Comments, some supportive statements from the staff report as well, that the applicant has the grading plan and storm water pollution prevention plan and, and the application has been prepared. The area proposed to be graded is located entirely beyond the one hundred-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback, and a dense, mature Norway pine plantation and other mature forest lies between the area and the lake.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, the proposed grading is reasonable in order to create safe. Yeah, the proposed grading is reasonable in order to create safe access roads and campsites for the proposed RV campground, which the ordinance considers to be a potentially compatible use with permitted residential lakeshore property such as campgrounds are allowed as conditional uses. And that's all I have for now.
What documents do we look at to know what, actually all these, both of cubic yards and stuff are moved, or? Oh, but just by that drawing?
Yes.
Well, also in the packet are the detailed grading plan.
Yes.
All these cross-sections.
Are you referencing now those? Or is that part of saying that the condition that it's gotta follow exactly what?
Oh, I didn't make a motion, I was just giving supportive statements.
Right, okay.
So we don't have an updated drawing?
With the removal of those sites?
No.
That he-
It remains essentially the same as, as what he, how he responded when I asked that question on part two.
Yeah, it doesn't really pertain to the grading and fill area. It only pertains slightly to the impervious surface.
Okay.
And the open space for a different area.
This is Timothy, I'll make a motion to approve the part two and adopt the staff's findings.
Will you put a condition about the CUP?
I will put a condition on the not being able to begin until he's received his CUP. Is that what it was?
Yeah, and then you just need to, oh, that'll be perfect.
And the work must be done according to the site plan, surveys and sketches in the application, right?
The work will have to be done according to his plans submitted by the engineers.
Okay, this is Mark, I'll second your motion Timothy, and you've adopted staff's findings of facts and noted that condition. So we'll take a vote on part two here. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. So that motion has been approved for that application. So now we'll move on to part three. Part three is regarding the 25% impervious surface threshold in tier two.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica, I would just like to address that the applicant is legally allowed to have 35 RV campsites in tier one alone. The application has, the applicant has now reduced his original 47 RV site plan by eight. And so now that, that comes to 39. And so I, I just, I'm in favor of the, I, I mean, appreciative of the applicant reducing the sites to help with your impervious surface along with helping your open space. But I just again, wanted to reiterate that he's allowed legally by the shoreline management ordinance to have 35 in tier one alone. But the applicant chose to move and only put a few numbers in tier one and have some of that overflow into tier two, which is causing our impervious surface. But if he didn't move any of those into tier one, because he is taking in account, you know, the, the impacts on the shore and impacts on that first, you know, the ordinary high watermark setback, that he has decided to move those RV units into tier two and have a drastically reduced number in tier one.
Okay, the 24 that was originally planned for tier one, what is that now? With the new plan?
I believe it's the same.
Tier one remains the same.
How many in tier two?
Tier two, he took out three.
What?
In tier two, he reduced three.
Three were taken out of tier two.
So it's 17 then? And how many are in tier three?
Five were removed.
So that's eight.
Yes.
So it's 24 in tier one, 17 in tier two and eight in tier three. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
39.
49 total?
Yeah.
I thought he said 39.
How many total campsites removed or?
Total.
Total.
I have 49, my arithmetic. Steve, it's 39, let me count. Hey, let's do this again then because my math's not adding up. How many in tier one are you proposing?
24.
Then it brings it to 40, then the numbers work.
But Mike, when I add up, I get 39, I get 49.
That's why I'm asking for a clarification.
Oh, wait a minute, eight, three, 18 is, so that should be 15. I took it away from allowed. Oh, wait a minute, let's back up. There's still 24 in tier one. How many in tier two?
17.
17.
No, there were 18 originally proposed and you said three less.
Tier two, it says 20 dwelling units of the proposed-
Allowed, 18 proposed. So the 18 is 15 now, right? It's down by three?
If you're referring to different parts in the staff report, the key to note is at times I'm referencing the technical number in the tiers and at other times I'm referencing where the majority of those units lie. And so the number's different for those reasons. So the, I mean, if you want to get the accurate as to what the ordinance says or in what tiers, then you'd want to reference these schematics. As you see all these partial ones that are in that tier, those technically are counted as tier one units. And so they're also located in tier two, but in terms of density calculations, the fact that parts of them lie in tier one, they apply toward the tier one density.
How many total are being removed, six?
Removing eight total, from what, removing eight from that previous number.
Eight, so you're down to 39 then?
That's what I was gonna-
Why are you removing those, those campsites?
To be able to meet also open space requirements of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
I'm still confused because if there are 24 in tier one and 17 or whatever, we'll say 17 in tier two and eight in tier three, that equals 49, not 39. So I don't, I'm not, one or the other isn't correct and I'm just asking for a clarification. I have 23 I count in tier one. 23 in tier one. How many in tier two?
How many did you say are tier one, 22?
23.
23.
Yeah.
23, 15 is 38.
16.
16, excuse me, in tier two, you're saying 16?
And how many in tier three? I'd have just two.
There are 39, there can't be any.
Correct.
Oh, so we have 41.
So that makes 41, do we have to also allow for cabins, homes?
Oh.
Or just?
The cabin as well as the shown future home would also count toward the allowed.
And those are in tier one?
The home is in tier one, the cabin is in tier two.
So that would be one more in each if they are built. You're not including the home or the cabin? Correct, those are dead and campsites, I was speaking specifically to- Those are strictly campsites, okay, so 41 campsites and possibility of a home and a cabin, okay, that's my numbers add up, I'm good now.
This is Veronica speaking, still my point-